Appeal hearing for June 3, 2025 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislator this year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June 2027. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform and is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints required. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to a hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to say their name and address first and then they can provide their comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. So we are a six-member board and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin today's hearing with the approval of the hearing minutes. These minutes are from the following dates, of May 15 and May 20 of this year. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll go to the extensions scheduled for 9:30 a.m. There are 10 cases. Typically, the, well, in this case, we would recommend that these are approved, but we'll take, Madam Chair will take questions on any of them once I read through them. We'll begin with case BOA 1322402 with the address of 817 to 819 Beacon Street. Next, we have case BOA 1322403 with the address of 819 Beacon Street. Then we have case BOA 1436577 with the address of 110 to 118 Terrace Street. Then we have case BOA 14355882 also with the address of 110 to 118 Terrace Street. Next, we have case BOA 962282 with the address of 40 Berkeley Street. Then we have case BOA 979536 with the address of 346 to 348 West Broadway. Then we have case BOA 1414548 the address of 201 Barstool Street. Next, we have case BOA 1589504 the address of 130 Central Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1044720 the address of 3326 to 3328 Washington Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1309944 with the address of 65 Tompkins Street. Those are the extension cases that we have, of course, this morning.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion to request, to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant the extension as red.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we move on to the board's final arbiter cases scheduled for 9:30 a.m. The first case is case BOA 1536940 with the address of 8 Old Grove. If the applicant and/or the representative or president would explain, go ahead, please.
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Sean Niehl. I work at the law firm of Greenberg Charg in Boston and I represent Harvard Street Neighborhood Health Center in this matter. With me today is David Valcios and Catherine Cutner from the Community Builders, who are the project managers for this project. And we're also joined by Danielle Buckley from the architecture firm of Istenuity. We're here today to seek modifications to the zoning relief originally granted for this project on December 5, 2023. Harvard Street Neighborhood Health Center is going to construct a new 42,000-square-foot state-of-the-art health center in the Mattapan neighborhood of Austin. In order for this project to move forward, we need modifications, we require modifications to the zoning relief granted back in December 2023. I should note that this project will involve two city-owned parcels, 8 Old Road and 14 Ellington Street. The Harvard Neighborhood Health Center is going to develop these properties through an RFP process. They are the designated developer from the city of Austin. This morning, we're going to walk you through the modifications that's necessary for this project to move forward. As you'll see, these are all very minor changes and there are no new zoning violations. There'll be no greater impact to the neighborhood as a result of these slight adjustments. So in 2025, a new site plan was developed for the project and that site plan showed discrepancies with the plan that was submitted to the ISD back in 2023. If you scroll to page 24 of the application. Thank you very much. You'll see that the project now is closer to the street than what was shown in 2023. This is not because the project has gotten bigger or there's been a change in use. It's simply because what was represented in 2023 was not completely accurate. So as a result, the lot line, there's less setback on the project. Oh, was there a question? Oh. So there's a 2-4 foot change on lot size, lot width, and lot front calculations, very minor changes. And again, it's not because the project has changed, it's because the survey has changed. In addition to the dimensional changes.
Put me back on my zoning.
I'm sorry?
Can you, Lisa, mute whoever's not presenting? Thank you. Please proceed.
As part of, thank you very much. As part of the design review process with the Boston Planning Department, Istenuity worked on issues related to topography and grading. These grading and topography improvements related to accessibility along Ellington Street. As a result of this regrading and site improvements that were done in coordination with the BPDA, the elevation, the height of, as defined by the zoning code, changed. That means under the zoning code, the height is now at 43 feet as opposed to 40 feet. But this does not mean that the building got taller. It's just because the regrading and the definition of vertical distance to grade is how height is determined on the zoning code, that now is at 43 feet as opposed to 40 feet. So again, a very small change to the height of the proposed project. And finally, the plans submitted in May show that there are now four off-street parking spaces. That's less than the six that was originally presented in 2023 to the ISD and then the board. That's a result of the project addressing city requirements for indoor bicycle parking as well as feedback from the Department of Public Health regarding handicap accessibility of the parking layout. So these modifications are necessary for the project to go forward. They don't result in greater impacts in the neighborhood and we respectfully request the board's approval. I should note that a member of the, I believe, a member of the Boston Planning Department staff is on board and to the extent necessary can express their support of the project. And we now open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I'm sorry, I got one quick question. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Yes.
I'm just curious, is there any offside parking? Where's the people and the residents? Where's the people that live in the community that's going to park when you guys are really busy over there?
I'm going to turn that question over to David or Catherine from Community Builders, if they might be able to speak to those issues.
Morning. My name is David. I'm a senior development manager with the Community Builders representing Harvard Street. Can you repeat your question? You mean after completion?
Right, right. I'm just curious because I know exactly where the area is. I know it's kind of tough to park on Blue Hill Ave, but I'm just more curious about the residents on Ellerton Street. Where will they be able to park if they can no longer park in front of their houses anymore?
I cannot speak in regards of the front of the houses of the neighborhood, but I know that we are adding the four parking spots that are being shot on plan and then there is, I believe, a couple of on-street parking in front of the building as well as a drop-off area that we're making as part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. I think these changes are relatively minor.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1536310 with the address of 1822 Gardens. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Hi, good morning, members of the board. My name is Evan Smith on behalf of 1822 Gardner Street. I am requesting an approval via the BFA process for a previously approved project that got changed via an extremely extensive BPDA and Boston Landmarks process. This project received approval for a four-unit, three-and-a-half-story building in late 2023. The building then went before the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition and the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. After a number of meetings, it was stated fairly clearly that the group would rather see two two-family buildings as opposed to one three-and-a-half-story, four-unit building in keeping with the two-family building that is directly abutting this property to the left at 12 Gardner Street. So we went back, we redesigned the building based on that feedback, split it into two so that it keeps, if you scroll down, you could probably find the elevations in keeping with the, yeah, down a little further. So on the bottom of that current image, oh, back up a little bit, sorry. The building on the left is 12 Gardner Street. The two in the middle are the two proposed buildings. We are keeping very close to the same GFA, the same FAR, the same unit count, the same bedroom makeup within the units. We are triggering the same variances with regards to rear, side, and front setbacks. And so looking for approval for this. It's already received BPDA and Boston Landmarks approval based on these changes.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1598937 with the address of 2-6 the Redfield Place. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Yes, thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Andrew Litchfield, representing 2-6 Redfield Place in Roxbury. This project was a seven-unit project was previously approved back in August of 2024. It's been approved by the BPDA as well. And we are just looking to shift the buildings from left to right, about three feet to account for the existing retaining wall on the left-hand side. After speaking with the neighbors, it's not, the retaining wall is not something that we want to touch. So we decided that we want to shift the building over from left to right, just three feet. Nothing else changes and all the variances remain, no new variances are added. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1523507 with the address of 35 to 35 B Old Morton Street. The applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Yes, I'm present. My name is Suzanne Nguyen and I'm the contractor of the project and Kai Ying Yi is the architect, he's on the back, if you have further questions. We have the board's approval to complete this project previously and we went through with the BPDA. BPDA examiner requested us to revise the front porch. We made the revision, it was approved and we submit that to plan examiner Jim Kennedy and he stated because of a variance violation, we need to go to the board for the final arbiter so that we can move forward with the permit approval. And so we're here asking for the board to please approve the project for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board? Is there a motion or are there questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Next, we have groundwater conservation of the Lake District case, scheduled for 9:30. This is case BOA 1693576 with the address of 27 to 29 Stewart Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, attorney, excuse me, Quilty, Miller, Hamley, representing the property owner for this location, 2729 Stewart Street Investments LLC. With me this morning, representing ownership, is Michael Sheehan. Good morning.
Good morning.
There is Michael. We have received our water and sewer approval letter as of April 7. We have provided all information appropriately to the various city agencies and we're here this morning hopefully for approval for the GCOG relief.
Is Mr. Seminelli on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both GCOG letters from the applicant.
Thanks, Christian.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. So I understand that you are only here for GCOG, but as I'm sure you are aware, there is community interest slash concern about the project and so I just want to be clear that there is continued community process for the actual use, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Of course, there will have to be a full community process for a transfer of a food and alcohol license as well as an application for an entertainment license. So much, much process to go. We're quite, quite well aware of that and of course, following this, if we are approved, following this, we will begin that process in earnest, but we, yes, ma'am, well aware.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, what kind of adult entertainment are you proposing here? And what will be the hours of operation?
The, excuse me, I apologize. My allergies are affecting my voice this morning. This would be the potential relocation of an existing adult entertainment license about a block and a half away to this location. And it would be a very similar operation. Our present operation has a 2 a.m. license. We would be requesting the same hours of operation for this and of course, all of which has to be, again, fully presented and vetted in the community and through two public hearings on these, on both the food and beverage license and the entertainment license applications. So many, many, many steps to go here before this goes anywhere.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Any raised hands?
There's no raised hands.
Are we, sorry. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Are we allowed to speak on this part of the, of the agenda?
If you want to provide public testimony, please do.
It's just a letter from Mr. Flynn, but I wasn't sure I were allowed to read it, so I just wanted to make sure.
We did receive it, but if you want to quickly read it?
No, you got it, you got it. If you receive it, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham. The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to rediscussion case, scheduled for 9:30 a.m. This is case BOA 1615071 with the address of 93 Howard Ave. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, good morning. My name is Emma Barboza with an address of 88 Howard Ave and my husband and I are seeking relief for a project located at 93 Howard Ave, which will include nine, one-two units of parking. We hosted in a Butters meeting in April and met with the DSMI Neighborhood Association in May 2024 and again in May 2025. In 2023, we proposed 12 units, but after hearing back from the Butters, we scaled the project down to nine, so happy to answer any questions.
Is someone walking us through the presentation or is that the extent, Ms. Barboza?
Yes, I believe our architect, I'm not sure if he's on it, who's going to be on, but I can, you know, I can walk him and I can answer any questions that you may have on it.
Yeah, I think it's just briefly let us know what are the, what are the violations that are going to be triggered from your project?
Sure, yep, so the refusal letter, it's asked you parking requirements. We do have parking in the rear. There was Article 50, the use was forbidden, multi-family dwelling was forbidden, but there are multiple, multi-family units in the area. Off-street parking was insufficient, additional lot size. We had violations for floor area ratio and the side drive was insufficient, so. But again, we did meet with Butters, like I said, they, we were originally looking to do 12 in 2023 and after hearing from them, we scaled it back to, scaled it down from that. So it's three, three stories, again, nine units, one bedroom units. And so should be, you know, looking to, you know, also lend this to people in the community and, you know, be able to accept vouchers for folks, whoever is interested in the unit.
Thank you. And can you remind us, are there any IDP units?
IDP, no, I believe because it's less than 10. I don't believe it was a requirement, but the units will be affordable to all, anyone who is interested.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, you just mentioned that the units will be affordable. Yes, you just mentioned that the units will be affordable. So what kind of affordability are you proposing?
Yeah, so just as far as rentals, like I said, they'll be available to anyone who is interested, including voucher holders. So, you know, like I said, we hope to make it as, you know, reasonable as possible as far as the price, but then also openly won't, so, you know, have vouchers available.
Okay, so it's market rate, but you will be accepting vouchers, that is?
Yeah, yeah, any type of subsidies.
Okay, so if not affordable, it's market rate?
Yeah, affordable, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, to clarify that, because that is a big difference.
Gotcha. Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I got one small question, I might have misunderstood this. Did she say all the units are one bedroom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, let's take public testimony.
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry, I am the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process. Just a little background of, for the follow-up meeting. And a Butters meeting was held, facilitated on April 25th, where Butters voiced concerns about parking versus the proposed number of units. They were stating that the congestion is a problem in the neighborhood. Another concern from an immediate abutter was the proximity of the proposal to their property and driveway, which was again addressed during the previous meeting. Other Butters voiced approval for the proposal, stating many properties do not have any onsite parking. The next proponent presented to the Dudley Street Neighborhood Association on May 23rd of 2024, and again on May 22nd of 2025, as requested by the zoning board. During the first meeting, inquiries were made if the amount of units is excessive in respect to the amount of available onsite parking spaces, and the proposal was approved to move forward. Following those events, the proponent made changes to the proposal, reducing the number of units from 12 units to nine units. The proposal and changes were presented to the Dudley Street Neighborhood Association, where no opposition was received, but an inquiry was made regarding IDP affordability. DSMA voted to approve the proposal to move forward. Thank you for your time, and the Neighbors' Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Yes, Fanny Abram, you can speak now. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Fanny Abram. In the home of the Capitol, Hades, South of Howard Ave, Duxford.
Are you speaking in support or opposition, please?
And my, my question is, Mr. Barbosa, he moved property, now those are my aggravation. He moved the property line, and he, he installed a fence right against my fence. I can't even cut hedges. And what I want, I would like, and I thought I had made this clear, that I want Mr. Barbosa to fix things like he found it.
Thank you, recording stopped.
I want him to.
Recording in progress.
I want him to replace the property line, because he built up all the property line, and then he installed that high fence, jammed right against my fence.
Ma'am, do you have any, do you have any other issues besides that one? We can, we can get to that. Do you have any other issues besides that about the development?
No, I want him to replace the property line.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get my phone later.
We will ask that question when we turn back to him, thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
There's no other raised hands.
Okay, so can the applicant address the concerns about the, whether there's any shifting of property line, fencing, et cetera?
Yeah, no, there was no shifting of the property line at all. We did install our fence on our property line, but we'd be happy to have a separate conversation, you know, with the owner as far as what their needs are. Sure, you know, as far as, we did install a fence some time ago, but it has nothing to do with the project.
A fence on your property line?
On our property, yes, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Shall I make a motion of approval? Would I provide for the proponent to confirm with the city that the property line is the property line that is legally in place for the proponent and the abutters?
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Next, we'll move on, move on to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 AM. First, we have case BOA 170.
Any, any withdrawals or requests?
Good, good, good point, Madam Chair. At this point, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or defos from the 9:30 AM hearing? Hearing none, and reminding folks that we also have a six-member board today. We'll begin with case BOA 1707193 with the address of 486490 Medford Street. If the applicant and/or their representative were present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, hi, my name is Mitch Palmerance, I live at the 490 Medford Street location. And I'm asking for relief from the Zoning Board of Appeal from Article 62, Section 29 of the Boston Zoning Code, for the purpose of installing a 10 by 13-foot aluminum pergola in the side yard of my condo. The violation being challenged is the dimension requirement, specifically, the code that says the structure must be four feet from the side yard and 65 feet from the front yard line. In this case, it would be impossible to meet these requirements in the Charlestown neighborhood. My property only extends 47 feet from the property line to the back of the property. In addition, there's only 12 feet from my unit to the Butters driveway. So a 10-foot pergola would not leave enough room for the four feet of space on the other side. I believe this structure would not only allow myself some privacy to use in multiple seasons, but it would greatly enhance the value of my property, and it would beautify the neighborhood. Right now, that piece of land is a very ugly plot of dirt in the midst of a busy road. So there would be a new fence constructed around the land to match the existing fences in the neighborhood. The pergola itself is very nice, very pretty, it's high-end. It has a clean, modern, sleek design, and it can withstand all four seasons. It would match the trim of the house with the white post, it would blend into the neighborhood. I have talked to my neighbors extensively, shown them plans. I've talked to the neighbors on the north, the south, the west of me. I've talked to the neighbors on the side of the, other side of the abutting driveway. Not only is that unit owner approved or have shown support for it, but his entire condo association is, is okay with that. As well as my unit owners and my condo association, they not only, they, they approve of that, they've written letters to the board in, in support. And then the woman who lives behind me, she also has written a letter in support. She'd be the one that would be looking on it, you know, from the back. So it would also be done by a licensed contractor, certified, who's certified in its safety, and has built other structures in the area. It would meet all the necessary requirements in terms of footing and stability. And we've presented insurance, workman's comp, experience model, that. And then finally, I've received the backing of my city councillor, Coletta Zapata, who's also supported my bid for beautifying the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I take, may I take public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sigur Gier Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw a distribution of an informational flyer to all the Butters in a 300-foot radius of the address in question, which solicited no comments to our office. With that background, we defer judgment to the board, thank you.
There's no other hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA 1714635 with the address of 105 North Washington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative were present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, everyone, my name is Sadeemir. I'm representing 105 North Washington Street. We are looking for relief for off-street parking. The building is, as of right now, is like two residential unit on the third and fourth floor, second, third, and fourth floor. And the first floor is a retail art gallery. So we are looking to switch of use from residential and retail to all residential units, so from two to three residential unit. We were on this meeting last, two months ago, and we had, we didn't get approved because of the basement that is like below the sea level. So we are removing the scope of work on the basement, and we are switching only the first floor to residential unit, which is about 450 square feet, it's one-bedroom unit.
Thank you.
And the owner is here on the meeting with us as well.
Sure. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, is there public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Apologies, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 105 North Washington Street. Our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a distribution of a subcommittee fire on 10/21/24. We have received no feedback from constituents. Additionally, the proposal was discussed with the local civic associations, NIRA and Munich. They convened on 11/19/25. Both of the associations have, have expressed non-opposition regarding the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
We do have one hand raised, Sebastian Parra.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parra from Councillor Coletta Zapata's office. At this time, the council would like to go and support this project, thank you.
There's no other hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1682351 with the address of 146 to 158 Lincoln Street. The applicant and/or their representative were present, would they explain?
Hello, my name is Eric Cowler from Howler Unit Architecture. I'm here with Caitlin Long Regan. We are the applicants for this proposal. I'm an owner in 150 Lincoln Street. I'm also a trustee of the Condo Association. It's an existing building, a six-story mixed-use condo. There was a roof deck on this roof historically, it's been there for 20 years. We removed the roof deck to repair our roof membrane, which was failing. When we applied to replace the roof deck with a new roof deck, we were told no by the ISD, citing excessive height and leather district roof structures. We'd like to appeal that, simply because we're simply replacing a roof deck that was there before, and it's not visible from anywhere on the street. We have engaged in a community process with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Flyers, we've solicited letters from our neighbors. If you scroll down, you see a little bit of the context. Our building is in the historic leather district. It's all pretty uniform in height in the leather district, about 80 feet. There are new taller buildings being planned around us. If you keep scrolling, our site plan shows the layout. This roof deck is sitting pretty much in the center of the roof. It's in roughly the same footprint that the historic one was. It's pulled back a little bit so that it fits with the structure. And it's not visible from anywhere in the neighborhood. So we'd like to request support for this appeal. And maybe, are there other images, you could keep scrolling? So this is the historic roof deck on the left, the new one proposed. You see it pulls back from the edge of the street. If you keep scrolling, please. This is an elevation. Obviously, from the street, you can't see this in elevation, we just wanted to show it. If you keep scrolling, these are sightlines from Lincoln Street and Beach Street. These are rather narrow streets. And then this just shows the view from Chinatown Park, also not visible from Chinatown Park because of its setback. And then we included some photos, this is the materials we're planning to use. It's a wood deck with black painted pickets, very discreet, very appropriate, very similar roof decks in the neighborhood. Next, please. These are some of the roof decks in our neighborhood, so when we look out and we see lots of our neighbors, it's a kind of community thing, we wave to them when we see them. It is a nice leather district quality to have this communal space on the roof decks. Next, please. These are some of the views of those roof decks. You see the same black picket detailing and the beautiful hardwood deck materials. This is an asset for the owners. But this is a communal roof deck, so everyone in the building uses it, it builds community. And that's something that some of our letter writers mentioned for us. I think there's one more slide or two. So here's some of the letters, I think they have been submitted through the Office of Neighborhood Services. A number of letter writers, including Mark Oldham, Chris Colbert, and I've been speaking to Catherine Friedman and Chris Bedke from the LDNA, explaining what we've been proposing. They don't see it as an issue, it's not contentious in any way, it's not blocking anyone's view, and it's simply returning a roof deck that we used to have, so that we can continue to use it. I think that's the end of our presentation, just shows the detail. We have introduced structural supports, and so the roof deck does span between those structural support, which is now co-compliant to old roof deck, was simply bearing on the membrane, which was not great for the roof.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, I would like to read Councilwoman's statement on this case.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 150 Lincoln Street. Our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. Flyers were distributed on 4/3/25, and during the two-week comment period, I received two letters of support from a Butters. The applicant did also meet with the 1LD Community Association. They reviewed it in early May of 2025, and they submitted a letter of support for the roof deck citing its benefits to property values, community connection, and neighborhood character. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Make you it. Excuse me, thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Okay, Counsel Flynn.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Chair and members of the board. Counsel Flynn would like to go record for the need for a community process as there was no a Butters meeting for this project. Counsel Flynn believes that the residents in a neighborhood deserve a say in what takes place there and what we should follow the public process for all projects and provide opportunity for engagement with the neighbors. I concluded, sorry. As a result, Counsel Flynn believes this project was not ready to be heard by the board, and that the furor should take place to allow for proper engagement with the residents. Thank you for your time, everyone.
I'm sorry, Counsel Flynn's office, are you, are you speaking to 146 Lincoln?
Yes, I know we.
Because you sent the letter.
Yeah, we're gonna resend a new letter.
I see, okay, all right, thank you.
And there's no other hands raised.
Thank you, I don't know if the applicant wants to respond to that before we proceed?
Yeah, I, I, we did work with the Office of Neighborhood Services to run the process. We did all the flyers, and we solicited letters of support. I heard on Friday from Counsel Flynn's office that he didn't know about the project, and I apologize profusely. I sent them the information, and they, I think they understand the scope of the project. I don't, I didn't think it was something that the Counselor's office would be so concerned about. So they have the information, I don't think it's a controversial project anyway. I don't think it's a controversial project in any way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry, and, and we did, uh, have the butters meeting waived from the Office of Neighborhood Services, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Can we make a motion to approve? It's replacing an existing roof deck, and it's further setback from the edges of the building.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valen...
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have, excuse, case BOA 1692469 with the address of 3390 Washington Street 15. Uh, this is also an Article 80 case. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Uh, and there is a companion case, Mr. Stenbridge, and it should be read into the record at this time as well.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Lawrence. Um, that would be case BOA 1692469 with the address of 33, oh, sorry, uh, Bearwood. Now, this would actually be case BOA 1686634 with the address of 3390 R. Washington Street, which, which is, Attorney Lawrence, is also an Article 80 case. Um, go ahead, Attorney Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Bob Harrington, the owner of the project site and the business located there, BMS Paper, uh, which is the local retailer selling paper products, restaurant and kitchen supplies, janitorial products, bulk items, and much more, uh, which has been a fixture in the community since 1984. Uh, I do wish to point out that Mr. Harrington's business, uh, which employs local residents and has always been a good neighbor on Washington Street, will not be relocating as a result of this project, rather it will be expanded and will remain a fixture in place with the new larger home in the proposed project. Besides Mr. Harrington, also joining us today is Christopher Tracy. Chris is a vice president at O'Leone Associates and led the project through its comprehensive, lengthy, and successful public review process. We also have David O'Sullivan and Donnie Garrity, the project architects, who will walk the board through the architectural drawings in a moment. Uh, the project consists of two buildings, hence the, uh, two addresses and, uh, two BOA numbers. Building A is at 3390 Washington Street and Building B at 3390 rear. The project site comprises four parcels, which are being consolidated to create a single parcel of just over two acres in size, at approximately 85,525 square feet. The project includes, uh, in addition to an expanded BMS paper, two new ground-floor retail uses, including a bakery, uh, a new neighborhood restaurant on the second floor, uh, of Building A. And as to the residential component, there will be 82 new residential rental units, with 39 being located in Building A and 43 in Building B. Parking will be provided for up to 87 motor vehicles, with a total of 138 bike spaces for residents, visitors, and retail employees all in compliance with the city's bike parking requirements. While the IDP policy in place at the time that this project was moving forward and was approved required 13% affordability, and while Plan JP Rocks requires 17% affordability, Mr. Harrington has agreed to provide 19 IDP units, which represents over 23% affordability for this project. Procedurally, as Mr. Stenbridge noted, this is an Article 80 large project and was approved by the BPDA Board of Directors in May of 2023. Since that time, O'Sullivan Architects has been working with the Planning Department and the Inspection Services Department on refinement of the architectural drawings and the permit applications. The drawings have also been approved by the Boston Civic Design Commission. Chris Tracy, in turn, has followed up with additional community process, securing a vote of approval by the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council in April of this year to go along with the vote of non-opposition by the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association in May of 2023. With respect to zoning and the request of relief, the site is located entirely within an LI, Local Industrial Zoning Subdistrict, under Article 55 of the code. It is also located, as I indicated previously, within the area of Plan JP Rocks, the city's approved comprehensive planning study for the area. There are, again, as I mentioned, two zoning refusal letters, um, two BOA numbers, one for each building. Building A, the front building, requires a variance for the multifamily residential use and a conditional use permit for the general retail business use. The bakery, the local retail unit, and the restaurant are all allowed uses. There's a violation for excessive floor area ratio. Project has a total gross floor area, both buildings, of approximately 133,586 square feet, with Building A containing just over 83,000 square feet and Building B just over 55,000 square feet. The maximum FAR allowed under LI zoning is one, while the total FAR of this project, taking into consideration both buildings, is a reasonable 1.51. There's a violation for excessive building height, with the proposed height of Building A's five stories being 64 feet, while LI zoning limits height at 35 feet. There's also, of course, a violation cited with two buildings on one lot. As to Building B, there's a violation for the forbidden multifamily residential use again, as well as a cited height violation. While Building B is a six-story building, thus one story taller than Building A, uh, its height from sidewalk grade, which is the measurement for zoning purposes, is only just over 45 feet. This has to do with the slope of the site. This still exceeds the 35-feet maximum height allowed by the code, of course. Building B has a rear yard setback insufficiency. Uh, since the rear lot line is not parallel to the front lot line, as the lot is irregularly shaped, the setbacks between the rear of the building and the rear lot line vary along its, its, its length, with the smaller setbacks occurring at the left and right rear corners of the building at just over 17 and just over 3 and 1 half feet, respectively. And finally, there's the same violation for two buildings on one lot. Uh, I would posit that the relief being requested is reasonable in light of the fact that the local industrial zoning designation here is essentially obsolete. This is an area that is now predominantly residential or mixed-use, which creates a fundamental dichotomy between the LI zoning designation and the character of the conditions in the neighborhood as its land uses evolve. Creating 82 new units of housing will address the city's acute housing shortage while providing both market rate and affordable housing opportunities. This is a meaningful contribution to the city's housing goals and will improve opportunities for residents at many different income levels. With that, I'll pause, turn the presentation over to Donnie Garrity, who will briefly take the board through the plans. We'll then pause and be happy to take any questions, uh, or concerns from board members. Donnie?
Thank you, George. Thank you for that, for that highlight. Um, good morning, everybody, Madam Chair. Um, if you want to just maybe scroll back to the overall plan, I'll just quickly highlight and orient everybody, um, on the ground level. So if you could please scroll back to, um, I think slide three, maybe? Um, down a couple? Slide four? Five, please? Um, excellent, thank you. So to orient everybody here, Washington Street is located on the bottom of the page. Building A is, um, off of Washington Street. And to the left there, where it's an L-shaped building, is, um, the recently constructed Pine Street building. So you can see, um, there's two access points on the site. One is through, um, the, um, shared space between Pine Street and our building, where we have our vehicle access for both projects. There is an easement for, um, access for both parcels there. Um, so we worked with our, our neighbors to, um, enhance and maintain that access point, um, for both buildings. Um, as part of the design review with the neighborhood and with the city staff, um, we worked to create a new dedicated pedestrian path that cuts through the existing building and provides a covered portico access, which I'll show later on in the 3D, um, to enhance public safety, pedestrian safety, um, adjacent to the vehicle access points to the, to the rear of the site. The other access point is toward the right, uh, right-hand side of the page, which is the existing BMS parking lot and entry point. This is a, also another shared access point with an Eversource Transformer Yard, which you can kind of see in the back, below the table there, um, where Eversource needs to have 24 365 access. Uh, we were able to, um, work with them to get a license agreement to, to use that shared driveway for our, um, new parking layout for the existing BMS parking. So the Building A along the street, um, in the pink half of that is the existing building to remain. The L-shaped portion that extends back into the back is the addition, which will be the expanded, um, retail space. The courtyard that runs between the two buildings will have service parking for the store and some visitor parking. And we have opened that space up, um, with landscaping and, um, other amenities for not only our building, but also for the Pine Street building, which we'll highlight again in the, in the illustratives. That building is Building B, which is set into the hill. So the, the ground level you see here is mainly vehicle parking, but we also have the shared bicycle parking space for, um, the development. Um, this is set into the hill as there's a significant grade change from Washington Street to the, um, the hillside and Forestville Apartments to the back. Um, so that's the kind of orientation of the site. Uh, if you want to scroll through the plans quickly. On the second level, you will see on Building A is the, um, restaurant space on the second floor, which, um, Counsel, um, George mentioned. And then moving up is residential, um, units above on Building A, another parking level on Building B. And then as we go up the floors, it's all residential units as we move, uh, up through the building. Um, I'll just quickly go to the, um, the perspectives. I think that would be the most helpful images. If you want to scroll through those perspectives, please.
Yeah.
You can skip to, uh, page 26, might be, if that's you. So this is, um, an overall aerial view of the proposed development. The Pine Street building is kind of in the foreground to the left. The two-story brick building is the existing BMS Paper building to the right. So you can see we have maintained that building, that historic presence, that familiar face along Washington Street. The ground floor is used for the retail space. The second floor of that building will be the new restaurant. You can see the addition to Building A is now emerging to the rear, kind of going into the site, where the residential units are starting to pop up, um, in that addition space. Building B is now situated to the back of the site, um, where you can see the residential units popping up. And again, the ground level of that is all going to be parking. So if you want to just quickly scroll through these, these are a series of aerial views, kind of going around the site. Um, with working with neighborhood and the staff, um, throughout the design process, we were focused on pedestrian safety, um, enhancing the open space in this back, um, area to, to create light in the air for not only our, our project, for the Pine Street end. So that's a view from Pine Street's courtyard that looks down into our landscape courtyard and has views to the urban landscape behind. Um, and then again, where we were able to add additional outdoor amenities spaces for our units, we did so at Building B, a rear open terrace. And then lastly, here's a, just a enlarged image of the new pedestrian, um, covered portico going through from Washington Street sidewalk, safely through our existing building to connect to the rear buildings. Where on the left, you can see, um, some bikes and vehicle going through. So, uh, I'll, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions. I'm happy to answer anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm familiar with the site, and I understand that this project was very different from the moment when you started in 2020, especially related to the amount, the number of, the, the number of housing units. So how many housing units were you proposing at the very beginning? And how many do you have now, and why you make changes?
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Donnie. Uh, George, you remember the exact number, um, off the top of your head? I can look it up quickly. It's been so long, I can't remember.
I think it was 110 when we first did it.
Well, I was looking at, when preparing the hearing, I was looking on, online, and I found a couple of articles detailing that initially you had 160 units. So I was very, very surprised to see the huge change, especially the reduction of, of units. So if you can add more information about how that happened?
We had a lot of community engagement throughout the process, and, um, originally, as part of that larger, um, development, it was actually one building. Um, and throughout the process of kind of introducing these light-in-air pass-throughs and changing to the two-building scheme, we also heard that it was too dense from the neighborhood. So kind of the factor of neighborhood feedback and creating these, um, smaller, massing pieces, reduced the unit count.
Okay, thank you, George. So with that, just a comment, I really like to see the 23% affordability. Looking at this project, I see this is possible for private developers to provide more affordable housing in private buildings across the city. But also, I'm really, um, concerned about the losing of so many housing units, losing 80 units in a project, I think that is a big loss for the city. So anyways, other than that, I really like the project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Maybe of public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office will defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, uh, this went through an extensive BPDA-led community process, uh, involving public meetings and also IAG meetings as well. In addition to those city-run meetings, uh, the applicant worked closely with the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, having a number of productive conversations with them, as well as also local abutters. Um, we understand that many in the community are very excited for this proposal, um, excited for the amenities that are being offered. Um, they also met with the JPNC after receiving BPDA approval in 2023. Uh, the JPNC was supportive of this proposal. With that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Yep.
Doris?
Good morning, Madam, uh, Chair and members of the board. I am Dylan Norris, the project manager within the Development Review Division of the Planning Department, assigned to this Article 80B large project before you. Uh, just a brief overview of the Article 80 process that this project went through. On, uh, August 20th, 2020, the proponent team for, uh, 3390 Washington filed a letter of intent under the BPDA's policy regarding the provision of mitigation by development projects in Boston. Letters soliciting, uh, soliciting nominations for an impact advisory group were delivered to state and local elected officials. On September 29th, 2020, that IAG was finalized with seven members. Uh, the proponent then filed a project notification form for the proposed project on November 20th, 2020, which initiated a 30-day public comment period, which was then extended, uh, on behalf of the proponent. Notice of the receipt of the PNF, or project notification form, was published in the Boston Herald on November 20th. Notice of the PNF, uh, and the PNF were sent to city public agencies and departments, elected officials, as well as the general public, uh, subscribed to the Jamaica Plain, uh, distribution notification list on the Planning Department's website. Uh, additionally, copies of the project notification form were sent to all members of the IAG. The BPDA subsequently then sponsored and he, held one general virtual public meeting on March 11th, 2021, and two virtual IAG meetings on Zoom on February 20, uh, February 1st, 2021, and March 9th, 2023, to solicit feedback and review the proposed project. The IAG meetings were advertised on BPDA websites, uh, distributed to the Jamaica Plain email list, and the public meeting was also advertised as well on the website and distributed through the Ja, Jamaica Plain email list. In addition to the above- referenced public meetings, proponent also conducted extensive community outreach, uh, a series of meetings before and during the Article 80 review process with the abutters, local elected officials, and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Association. Uh, the project was then brought before and approved at the BPDA Board on May 11th, 2023. Uh, thank you. I'll defer to the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions related to the Article 80 process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Laura Perez, unmute yourself. Please state your name and address.
Uh, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board.
this is Minor Perez, Executive Director for the Carpenter's Labor Management. On behalf of hundreds of union carpenters that live across the city of Boston, I want to go and record a support. I also want to go and support on behalf of many employers that build across the city of Boston, that observe and maintain state and federal laws in compliance with labor standards. Thank you so much.
There's no other hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion. This is a good project. 23% affordability is really important for the city, for the BPAD, the planning department. I think there is no mention on the planning department memo that the project initially had about 150 or 160 units. So that is good or important for the context. But with that, I make a motion of approval. This is a good project and I really appreciate the creation of affordable housing in the city.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yep.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo.
Yes.
Ms. Tano.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we'll move on to case BOA 1701470 with the address of 533 Washington Street. It's the applicant and or their representative present. Will they please explain?
Hi, everybody, members of the board. Thank you for your time. My name is Zach Felchew, co-owner of 533 Washington Street. Purchased the property late last year. It was explained to me that it had been vacant for a couple of years following a sprinkler burst, and the interior had to be demoed. So that's its current condition. It's vacant and in need of repair. We are seeking approval for five residential rental units in this property using the existing footprint. You can scroll down to the plans to take a look. As mentioned, we're not changing the exterior of the home, and we will have one parking space per unit, which is valuable given this is a busy area. One thing that's also of note, as you look at that photo right there, is that our entrance to the parking is off of Dunlap Street as opposed to the busy Washington Street, which helps with traffic flow as well. Continuing down, we are going to have our first floor and lower-level units be three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath. You walk into open living areas with a bedroom, full bath and half bathroom, with two bedrooms, another living area, and a full bathroom on the lower level. Those will be 1350 square feet and 1390 square feet, respectively. Continuing on, on the second floor, we have two one-bed plus office or smaller bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath units. Those are both 720 and 640 square feet. Before going on to the top floor, we have one two-bed, two-bath unit. That's 1,020 square feet. Again, all of our units will have an off-street parking space. We're planning on using the existing exterior of the home with the only primary change being adding front doors where there's an existing window. I do have letters of support from our immediate abutters. We fired the neighborhood and also presented at the West of Washington Neighborhood Association. We are seeking variances for the use of the first floor and lower level for residential and for our parking spaces. Again, we have one space per unit. The requirement is listed as 1.25 spaces per unit. And then finally, there's an open space requirement. This one, I think, actually may have been listed in error because we have 1,400 square feet of green space, which is mostly listed on the front of the property. And the minimum requirement is 250 square feet. So with that, happy to answer any questions. And we're seeking your support for us to rent these units out. There's another project that we recently executed nearby where we've worked with entities that partner closely with Boston Housing, and that's worked out well. So it would be a similar approach for us in renting these units. But the goal is to, you know, list them at market rent with the opportunity to hopefully partner with another one of these organizations. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing non-mayor public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the George Justice Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on February 12th. With no abutters in attendance, no inquiries were made. Next, the proposal was presented to West of Washington Civic Association, and with no opposition, the project was approved to move forward. To date, our office has received three letters of support and one letter of opposition, but they oppose stating the lack of parking, congestion, trash, and the number of units stated in three is excessive for the neighborhood. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
See any other hands raised? Oh, Brian?
Hi, thank you. Timothy Gimmoun here on behalf of Counsel Brian Worrell. The counsel would like to support this project. We also spoke with West of Washington, and they again are happy to support, and we appreciate the family-style units. So with that, the counsel supports this project.
Thank you.
It's another hand.
With that, may I have a motion? Motion to approve. One second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo.
Yes.
Honor.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1680330 with the address of 37th to 39th Soliris Road. It's the applicant and or their representative present. They please explain to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Vugini, on behalf of the proponent. I am joined today by David Freed, who is the proposal's architect, and Ed Covert, who is the long-term property owner of this parcel. 37 Soliris Road is in Hyde Park on the Denim Line. It is lot size is 17,397 square feet. The zoning is 2F5,000. The proposal before you is to raise the existing structure and build a five-unit townhouse-style staggered building. Each unit will have two parking spaces internal to the building by use of a two-car garage. We filed the plans with ISD and received the following variances. We had violations. We had a FAR, which is lot is .05. We have a .054. We had a violation in stories. The zoning calls for 2.5 stories, 35 feet. We are at three stories at 35 feet. We have multifamily residential in a two-family zoning sub-district in open space. And we have approximately almost 2,100 square foot of open space per dwelling unit. This went through a thorough design to ensure that this proposal has the least amount of impacts on the abutting properties. On our side yard, when Mr. Freed shows you the plans, you'll see the zoning calls for 10 feet. However, we have a minimum of 15 feet on the left side at the closest point, and that is in the rear of the lot where there are no other houses. At the farthest point, we are more than 35 feet away from the abutting lot line. On the right side, we have 30, almost 32 feet, 31.9 feet at the closest point, and over 50 feet at the furthest point. Currently, the structure that's there now is approximately four feet. So I'll turn this over to David Freed. He will quickly go through the designs, and we will happily answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. As John said, our proposal was for five semi-attached single-family houses that are staggered back towards the rear of the lot. At the back of the lot here is Mother Brook. All the unit entrances face the front. We set back the building 15 feet on the left side here and just under 31 feet on the right side. Our side yards are a little bit larger than some of the existing in the adjacent properties. The front yard is maintained, the mold is set back. These units are 1,880 square feet of living space plus a two-car garage. They'd be four bedrooms and three-and-a-half baths. Next slide, please. These are just elevations. And the one thing about staggering the buildings back, not only does it allow the entrances to face the front, but it gives you a very large sightline back to the Mother Brook. Whereas if we had done, for instance, two side-by-side sets of townhouses, there would be no view back towards the river. And then this is a sort of rough rendering of the proposal and some aerial views from the model. And there's our plot plan. And if anyone has any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing non-mayor public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on January 30th with no abutters in attendance. Next, the proposal was presented to the Reed Bill Watch Neighborhood Association, who voted to oppose the proposal due to the number of units, the size of the proposal, as well as the design and layout. To date, our office has not received any further community feedback at this time. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's three hands raised, so I'm going to call Drew. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Drew Polk, and I live at 22 Soliris Road, which it may not seem like it, but it's directly across the street from 37 Soliris Road. I am thoroughly opposed to this project. It's too big. It's unwelcome. The street infrastructure cannot handle it. I have submitted several letters to the zoning board, Board of Appeals, and I will let those letters speak for themselves. But this project is unwelcome. It's not wanted. It's too big. There's a reason why zoning rules are in place, and I think they should be adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, phone number, 774? After the mirror, I mean it.
Hello, my name is Laura Serena. I live at 3 Danny Road in Hyde Park in Leaville. I also grown up in Hyde Park my whole life. And I viewed the project, and I think it will be a great addition to the area. Not only because it would be great for families to be able to live there and watch their children grow up in such a great area. Thank you for letting me speak. I really consider it.
Thank you.
Sanjay?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm speaking in opposition of this project. First, this building is not keeping with the other buildings in the neighborhood. It will be the largest building in our dead-end street. As Drew mentioned earlier, our street is already packed full of cars. There's a nasty bend there. And whenever there's an emergency, so trash and emergency vehicles have a hard time making it to the end of the street because of all the traffic and cars that are parked on the street around that bend. So there's no sidewalks. Like, the street can't support that many more cars. So plus with the EPA stuff with the Mother Brook back there, I just have serious concerns. It's such a large building. The zoning is for two families. If they cut down the size of the building and put two buildings with two families, which is what's currently zoned for, I wouldn't have such a big problem. But the lack of parking and additional cars on this small street is deeply concerning.
Thank you.
There's two more hands. Nicole, iPhone?
Hi, good morning. My name is Nicole Irvin. I am a resident of 58 Soliris Road, speaking today in opposition of this project for many of the same reasons that both Drew and Sanjay have just brought up. I myself have two young kids. They play out in the street. It's a dead-end street. And the amount of cars that already come down speeding around that bend, our street is not built for a project of this size.
Thank you.
Minor Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Minor Perez, Executive Director for the Carpenter's Labor Management Program. I'd like to go and record and support on behalf of our members that live across the city of Boston and the employers employ them. We're in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one more hand, if that's okay. Michelle?
Hello?
Yes, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Michelle Sebastian, and I'm at Soliris Road, 60 Soliris Road. I'm calling and speaking on behalf of many of the concerns that people have already brought up as far as the infrastructure on the building. I oppose this, and it's not in keeping with the neighborhood as far as the style is. The most of the homes in the neighborhood are single-family homes and approximately 1,780 square feet. And there is a high volume of traffic already. It makes it difficult for snow removal, trash removal, and any type of servicing on the road. Also, the volume that would bring into this into the neighborhood will actually increase the volume of traffic by quite a bit. And I think, believe, when I did my stats with the GC that I do work for, it brought it up to over 35% increase of traffic flow. Also, the street does have Mother Brook behind it. There is some current, there was certain, there was mention of cleaning up the plumes of the river and by putting the structure, how that would impose on it. And also, can the building even stay the way it is, be in the area the way it is being proposed because it's so close to the river? The other concern is with other abutters is how this is going to impact when they are building their structures and damages to the different foundations. We've had current construction at the top of the road, and it has impacted people throughout the neighborhood with the sound and other construction vehicles going on. And it isn't even, this building's around River Street on the corner of Soliris, and it's impacting us. I strongly oppose this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No other units, Madam Chair.
Would the applicant like to take a moment?
Sure, Madam Chair. I'm just going to address a couple of those issues. So we put a lot of thought into this building, because we were very sensitive to any impacts on our abutting parcels. And if you look at this as opposed to as a right building, two-unit buildings on the street, this would, that would create like a canyon effect and block any views backward. By doing it, the staggered, we're preserving open space. We're opening up a big buffer between us and our side abutters. We are, I think, well over 40 feet from the rear yard, so we're fine there. We, I heard somebody say that we didn't have enough parking. We have two spaces, which is the parking requirement in Hyde Park, where those would just be contained under the building so they wouldn't be seen. If we're two-family, there would be cars, you know, potentially parked in the backyard. In this way, we can keep it a much cleaner, nicer-looking building. Again, the staggered building is a big deal, and the fact that it is homeownership really goes a long way. So we felt that this would be the best proposal that we can put forward. We thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Have you all had any communication with the Parks Department about the impacts to Mother Brook?
Yeah, we have to go through that. So in the succession is ZDA first, and then we will go to parks as instructed through ISD.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval. I think the law is pretty large for the neighborhood and can support the five units. I think the site design is efficient. It minimizes paving. I think the proposed three stories is compatible with the neighborhood. So I'll move to approve with a proviso for review from the Department of Parks and Recreation.
There a second? Again, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Luwao?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1702950 with the address of 813 Cummins Highway. This is also an Article 80 case. If the applicant and/or their representative or president, would they please respond to the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Attorney Mike Ross from the Law Firm of Prince Laval, the business address of One International Place. And I'm here with the architect for this project. His name's Eric Zacherson. This is a proposal that was approved by the Boston Planning Board as a small project review, Article 80E project, on September 12, 2024. This was approved prior to the Squares and Streets Article 26 and revised Madapan Neighborhood District Article 60 zoning regimes. However, since the new zoning was passed after the Boston Planning Board approval but before this zoning hearing today, the relief we are seeking is being framed under the new zoning, even though it was initially built or proposed with the old regime in mind. In addition, the rear portion of the project is in an R2, now R2 district with sub-district, with the front portion in an S1 district. And you can keep it, Madam Ambassador, on this slide because it shows, it shows that. Really, the first slide is probably the best slide for now. So for that reason, the zoning relief appears twice as long. But I'll go through the zoning right after Eric presents the plans. So on this slide here, the, this is transoring to development in that it sits on the commuter rail, which runs directly behind or to the side of this parcel and sits directly at the Blue Hill Avenue train station. The plan is to build 40 units of homeownership on what is now vacant parcels, which comprise just under 20,000 square feet, where seven of these units would be affordable, giving the project an affordability percentage of 17.5%. The units themselves are two studios, 10 one-bedrooms, 26 two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms, for a total of 35,000 square feet in residential growth floor area with ground-floor retail at the corner of Cummings and Hollingsworth Street of 2,143 square feet. There's also a significant ground-floor plaza that runs along the front of the building at Cummings Highway with a generous setback of the building of over 20 feet at the corner. You can see how the building steps down in three main stages as it heads towards or down Hollingsworth Street, ranging from five floors at the corner at the intersection to three floors at the end of the building at Hollingsworth to meet and match the heights of the abutting residential property. And then finally, for this slide, you can see the MBTA commuter rail tracks that sit at the side of the building. The opponent agreed to set back the property an additional 10 feet from the property line to allow for a maximum distance from the MBTA property, which is well beyond the required minimum distance to the right of way. Madam Ambassador, if you go to just the site plan on page three, I just want to quickly bring you through that and then turn it over to Eric. Yeah, thank you. So just what you see here is the ground floor of the building, you know, with the retail in the corner at the intersection with that plaza area I referenced, which spans the entire frontage of the building with raised beds to delineate the entrances of the retail and then the entrances to the property itself. We'll have more landscape plans to show you in a moment. The building amenities are in the front portion of the building along Cummings Highway. And then in the back half of the property, through a 12-foot curb cut on Hollingsworth Street, you have 24 tandem parking spaces. But really, there are only 18 total spaces as defined by zoning because of their tandem nature. And then 10 of those are compact. Let me pause over at this point and then come back to just hit the zoning. For now, I want to turn it over to Eric Zacherson, the architect.
Thank you, Michael. Eric Zacherson, architect for the project. Could you scroll down a couple of slides to the architectural site plan? And I'd like to kind of highlight the landscaping. One more slide, I believe. Oh, dear. Okay, keep going. Just a couple more slides. So basically, I want to highlight the fact that along Cummings Highway, we worked with both the VPD and VTD to develop this plaza. Yes, this slide here, along Cummings Highway, which has, if you can imagine, from the top of the page, we can have the bridge over the trail, train tracks. And then as it scrolls down, sorry, if you scroll down just a little bit, it comes down to the intersection of Hollingsworth. And the slide right before this, yeah. No, one more. Okay, and there's a 1,500-square-foot plaza, which is in effect, so combined just the slope of the grade on the right side. That is kind of the critical organizing community element. It has both the 2,000-square-foot retail space. One more slide up, A101. At the bottom right corner, there's a, yeah, I'm sorry about this slide's loading. I think that file might be very heavy. Yeah. At least you can see the, at least see the retail in the bottom right-hand corner. Yeah, this is the perfect slide. If you can, you can see the bottom, the retail in the bottom right-hand corner. That was integral in our conversations with the community and with the VPD to try and activate this corner so close to the trains and the whole lot. Above that, on the slide, you see a community room in the lobby. What the community group there and the neighborhood and the VPD were very excited about having a community room and that is right on the Cummings Highway and right on this new plaza that we're creating, 1,500-square-foot plaza. Adjacent to that is the lobby and the bike parking, 44 bike parking spaces so that the people could be able to use that as well as the train station, which is across the street, as their primary means of communication. There's also a gym located at the back portion of this. It's going to be inside the building. That allowed us to get the lobby, the community space, and the retail, as well as the bike parking, all have primary access right along Cummings Highway. Across the bottom of the page, we have Hollingsworth. And there, we're going to have complete streets with a four-foot-wide greening zone and a six-foot, 10-inch pedestrian zone in line with, in line with what the VPD is trying to do with sidewalks throughout the community and make that a welcome neighbor. If you want to slide up one slide, I can kind of orient the building. Yeah, so you can see here the green areas that are the green, green both Hollingsworth and Cummings Highway. On the plan slide, which would be going, if this is slide 11, I think it should be slide 13. We would have, you see the first floor of residential units. And what's important is on the residential units is that we have two full floors of residential so that on the left side here, where we're adjacent, you can leave it at this slide. This one will work great. On the left side, we have units all the way to the, near the edge of the neighboring property. But on the left of us, we have a pair of triple deckers. And so as, we didn't want to go more than three stories. So at this, the fourth story, we start to pull things away from the left side of the building and, or the left side of the property and make sure that we're kind of have the massing of the building on the right side, right on Cummings Highway. So on this slide, see, on the fourth level, we pulled it back 20 feet from the, from the edge of the building below. And you see that we're doing a green roof, also something that was asked for by the, by the community to mitigate the urban heat island effect. Now, if you want to go back up one slide to 14, you can see, or one more to 13. On the second floor, that area that we kind of go around creates a private courtyard on the roof of the parking area. Yeah, you see it here at the bottom of the page. Create a private outdoor space for the community. We have one here on the second floor, and then we have another one at the top of the building. So we want to go from slide 13 to slide 14 slowly, and then to 15, you'll see the top floor of the building. So this is, this is level two. Next slide is level three. Thank you very much. You're getting, I don't know why this file seems to be so heavy. And then, yes, so this is, this is that fourth story where you see the green roof starting to emerge on the, on the left side of the building. Then we'll go one more slide to the top of the building. And you can see that the, on the top floor, we have pulled back entirely from the left side. We have more of that green roof. And we also have a small common roof. So it's a second common amenity space that would be on the roof of level four. And the idea is that this is just giving tenants one more flexible outdoor space on this kind of constrained site, but also one which would have a lot of pretty fantastic views of the city. And that's basically it. Do you want us to? Perhaps we could try and sign the elevations while Mike kind of wraps up.
Those are on page 42, Eric. Page 42 for the renderings might be helpful.
This is 42. Where she's in, she's trying to move us to 42.
So maybe we'll pause and ask if there are questions from the board at this time? Okay, are you okay with us going to public testimony?
Yeah, sure. Go back one slide to 42, and I think we just rest on that. People can see kind of the mass in the building.
And Madam Chair, whenever you're ready, I'm happy to run through the zoning as well.
Let's go to community process and come back. Is there any raised hands?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has to defer to the judge for this board. This went through a VPD-led small project review community process, involving a public meeting. The applicant also engaged with the Cummings Highway Neighborhood Association, which ultimately was supportive of this proposal, feeling it was in line with what the neighborhood needs in regards to homeownership as well as community amenities. With that info, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
There's no other hands raised, Madam Chair.
Okay, do you want to just quickly talk about the zoning?
Yeah, really quickly, Madam Chair. So it's, it spans an S1, S1 in the front of the building and then an R2 in the back, back of the building, back half of the building, let's call it. So for use, retail is allowed in the front. Doesn't exist in the, in the rear. Multifamily is allowed in the front, but not in the rear. So we had a violation for the use in the R2 for lot coverage. You have a 70% requirement of lot coverage for this district in S1 and a 30% in R2. We're at 76. The permanent area, you have a 15% permanent area allowance for S1 and a 25% requirement for R2. We are at 16.5, which complies with S1 but not R2. The front yard was not cited due to existing building alignment. We were cited for rear yard, but this is a corner lot. And as a corner lot, it would have two fronts and two sides. So that shouldn't have been cited. And then likewise, in the side yard, we are five feet to from the abutting property owner on Hollingsworth, where three is required. And we are 10 feet from the rail bed or from the MBTA property line. So that both comply, even though we were cited. For floor plate, these are, this is a 20,000-square-foot, almost 20,000-square-foot lot. So we built, you know, 70% of that, give or take, so that we're at 14,751 square foot floor plate, where 8,000 is required, is allowed in an S1 district. And for height, the building steps down to 35 and begins at 55. The height requirement for S1 is 50, and R2 is 35. We were cited for height. For stories, we have five stories in the front, three in the rear. There are allowed four in an S1 and three in an R2. We were cited for stories. Parking is allowed to be zero in an S1. We have 18 lot units by, parking spaces by code. R2, however, requires .75 per unit, which would require 25 units. We were cited for that. We're cited for loading, even though we do show loading. Zero required for S1, one required for R2. I would just say that the lot is such that the zoning variances are required to represent the minimum relief necessary. The lot is substantially topographically challenged. Slants are downward from the front corner of the lot toward the rear. There's also train tracks and abutted property along the side, making it a very difficult site to, to work through. I'll pause there, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is a good project. Okay, please go ahead.
You can go ahead. Yes, you started.
Either one of you.
This project providing very needed housing in Boston, so I make a motion for approval.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Luwao?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Or Langham?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Good luck. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, since we've passed the 11 o'clock hour, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or referrals from the 11 o'clock hearing. Hearing none.
Excuse me, Mr. Secretary, are you also addressing 11:30, or are you going to wait until 11:30?
We will at 11:30.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll go return to case BOA 1689386 with the address of 482 to 488 Center Street. If the applicant and/or their representative or president, would they please respond to the board?
Good morning, board members. Thank you for taking time to listen to me. Let me give you a little backstory of my situation here. My father has owned and operated-
Sorry, can you just state your name and address for the record?
I'm in Jonas Papadopoulos, 482 to 488 Center Street.
Great, thank you.
My father has owned and operated the business located there since 1998. We sold that business in 2022. The purchaser has left the business abandoned and vacant since last June. I came to the offices and applied back in October for the change of name and the take-up proviso. Took several months to get a refusal. I finally got that, and I filed my appeal. I was reached, liaison to the Mayor's Office reached out to me about having an abudders meeting. We set one of those up for months ahead of the time. She emailed me before and told me that all the necessary changes were minimal since we're essentially just changing the name of the business, and we can come to this step. So now I'm here in front of you guys.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, again, what business is this? What is the service you provide?
A pizza shop.
Okay.
We've been there since 98. I'm opening up myself now without, without my father. The business has been abandoned since last June.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May we have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process. Due to the minor changes, our office did not require a full community process. The proponent was then connected to Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Public Services on February 27th, where again, they were not required to complete a full process. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
There's no other hands raised, Madam Chair.
Yeah, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
That can be.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Luwao?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next we have, next we have case VOA one seven zero six one eight seven with the address of forty-five forty-one to forty-five forty-nine Washington Street. If the applicant and, and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Hello?
Yes, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, how are you every month? So sorry for my English, my English also. I can explain in Spanish or, or English or try in English. In Spanish?
Uh, English if possible.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, 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 I need either please for remove for the takeout because I, 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 I don't have delivery or site. I can use the Uber and DoorDash. And you know, sometimes when it's raining, the people, it's cold, but I can do that. Like this is only, he's only take food here, you know? Please, I need the remove. I'm so sorry for my English. It's bad sign.
You did great. Is this for, um, Bunny Bonnie restaurant? Yeah, yes, okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Roselandale Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process. Due to the minimal changes, our office did not require a full community process. With that, our office know the civic and the proposal was approved to move forward with the zoning board. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wu Will.
Yes.
Mr. Turner, Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I can leave?
Yes.
For them. Thank you, have a good day. Thank you, good bless you everybody. Thank you.
Next we have case VOA one seven zero nine four three six with the address of one oh five Alston Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Goggan. I'm with Coulson and Stores, address at one post office square. Uh, I'm here, uh, on behalf of the West End House Boys and Girls Club. The West End House Boys and Girls Club is located at one oh five Alston Street in the Alston Brighton neighborhood. Uh, that zone is a two-family residential sub-district of the Alston Brighton neighborhood, uh, zoning district. The project that the West End House is bringing before you today is the addition of an approximately three hundred and twenty square foot hydroponic container farm that will provide fresh produce to be included in the West End House's meal programs and grocery programs. Uh, the new farm will be integrated into the existing building at the second level and its actual, um, expansion of the footprint will be somewhat less than that three twenty and it'll be pushed into the building somewhat. Uh, the only relief that we require for this is the use. This is obviously a very unique use. Um, we need a conditional use permit to expand the existing, uh, community center, which has been in place in the neighborhood for decades. We also need variances to allow the freight bit, to allow the farm as an accessory use under both, uh, Article fifty-one and Article eighty-nine. Uh, with me this morning is the CEO of the West End House, Andrea Howard. She's going to walk you through just some of the program itself and a little bit of the project. Uh, and we've got other members of the team that are here to answer any questions that you may have on it. Andrea, are you there?
Yep, thank you, Kevin. Um, thank you, thank you, members of the board. Um, uh, as, as Kevin said, uh, West End House located in Austin. Um, we've been a community anchor in the city of Boston for over a hundred and twenty years and in Austin for almost fifty-five. Um, this exciting program opportunity enables us to build on, uh, our long-term commitment to food security currently, which focuses on scratch-made meals prepared daily. Um, and our Food for Families program, which provides groceries, um, every month to nine hundred folks. Um, approximately twenty-five thousand pounds of food given out each month. Um, this partnership with container farms is really rapidly growing across other boys and girls clubs around the country. And there's several successful ones here, uh, in the Commonwealth. So we are excited with the opportunity to grow up to six thousand pounds of, uh, culturally-preferred vegetables for our families. Um, it also creates a great opportunity for our STEM activities for our younger kids and is going to be a, a workforce development component, um, with our, uh, employment of, uh, ten teens annually.
As you can see here, this is just a, a quick rendering of the project. Uh, you can see sort of what looks like the, the freight container itself on that second level. It will be built in, it's right up against the existing structure and it will sit on the, uh, the second story, um, patio or upper deck area. Uh, as I know the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services will go into, uh, we've been in contact with the Mayor's Office, with many of the elected officials. We've received, uh, a great deal of support for this project and we all, we hope to get the, the board's approval this morning.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, good morning. Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of this application. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to all the Butters in a three hundred foot radius of the parcel in question, which solicited one letter of opposition which was forwarded to the board. The Alston Civic Association is in strong support of this application. The West End House is a cornerstone of the Alston Brighton community, providing extensive benefits to residents. And Mayor's Office, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services is enthusiastically in support of this application. With that background, with that background, we'd like to support the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's two hands raised, so Alex, please state your name and address.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Alex Camerina. I'm the aide to State Representative Kevin Honan. I'm here on behalf of Representative Honan to express his strong support of this project and share his testimony as well. Uh, Representative Honan wished to highlight some of the benefits of this project. In particular, he notes the expanded access to healthy food in our neighborhood as well as the creation of meaningful opportunities for local youth. The freight farm is expected to yield up to six thousand pounds of fresh produce each year, which will be distributed to the West End House's youth meal program and community grocery efforts. Uh, both programs that serve hundreds of families facing food insecurity in our neighborhood. Uh, in addition to food production, the farm will provide hands-on training and STEM-based learning for teens whom the West End House has a long and proven record of serving. Representative Honan urges the board to support this dynamic proposal and help advance a project that will strengthen both the health and economic well-being of our community and beyond. Uh, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
And Maura?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Maura Creed and I'm a member of Alston Brighton City Councilor Liz Brayden's office. The council would like to express her strong support for this proposed project. Um, as others have mentioned, the West End House provides critical, critical programming and services to youth and their families in Alston Brighton and Boston. Um, with this proposed project, they'll be able to expand their programming and will also, um, be able to expand their, their services related to food access and food security. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's no other hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wu Will.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
And Phil Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Boyd.
We'll move on now to the hearing scheduled for eleven thirty a.m. We'll ask again if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals.
Yes, uh, Mr. Secretary Joseph Feaster from the law firm of, uh, let's say McKenzie Dane Torpey, one seventy-five Federal Street. I can't remember what law firm I'm at these days, uh, Mr. Stenbridge. Uh, twenty-four years of the other one and three here, it's, uh, hard to remember. But in any event, Dane Torpey, one seventy-five, uh, Federal Street, uh, in Boston. I am calling, uh, would like to get a deferral on seventy-five and eighty-six Marcelo Street.
Uh, is that okay, Madam Chair?
I know, you are three minutes early, but let's just, let's just fall ahead. We don't need to, we can hear it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Unless Caroline says otherwise.
I can always wait the two minutes if you'd like.
We can live, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's get to the record.
So with that, we're looking at case, uh, two companion cases, case VOA one seven zero four six six zero with the address of seventy-five Marcelo Street. Along with that, case VOA one seven zero four six six four with the address of eighty-six Marcelo Street. Uh, would you go ahead and explain, Attorney Feaster?
Certainly, uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, members of the board. Uh, this request is actually made, uh, as, at the request of the Mayor's Office of Housing. They are still, uh, the Mayor's Office of Housing is still in negotiation with several Butters and asks that, uh, that the applicant, uh, seek a deferral until July eighth. So if that, uh, if the board is inclined to do that and will grant us that date for the deferral, it'd be much appreciated.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to July eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wu Will.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. We'll see you then.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a great day.
You too.
So with that, we'll return to the hearing scheduled for eleven thirty.
Uh, Mrs. Stenbridge, I do have, uh, sorry, I do have a deferral request, Mrs. Stenbridge. I'm sorry, the first two, uh, matters in the rediscussion, they're companion cases, uh, Bunker Hill Street and Mystic Street.
Okay, so that would be for case VOA one five nine eight one eight nine with the address of one A to one B Mystic Street. And along with that, case VOA one five nine eight one eight, eight one nine nine with the address of two twenty-three to two twenty-five Buckle Hill, Buckle Hill Street.
Thank you, Mrs.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Stenbridge. Apologies for talking over you. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, in light of the six-member board, I'd like to request an administrative deferral for these two matters.
Okay. Do we have a date, dates Caroline?
Yeah, we could do July eighth or July twenty-ninth.
I'm sorry, the second was July.
Eight or twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
July twenty-ninth, please.
Okay, and no guarantees it'll be a seven-member board then, but with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to July twenty-ninth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wu Will.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Now returning to the hearing scheduled for eleven a.m. We'll remind folks if that, yes, we're six-member board today.
Mr. Stenbridge, I think we still have one on the nine thirties? Guest Street, sixty-seven Guest Street?
Yes.
Or did that, is that on?
Um, I, I don't believe that's on.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Madam Chair.
No, no, it was an old, old printout. Next.
Okay. Uh, so with that, we'll, for eleven a.m., we will move on. We will go to case VOA. Case VOA one six nine four seven nine five with the address of five sixty Harrison Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mrs. Stenbridge. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulgi here on behalf of SOA Health and Fitness, which is a neighborhood health club located at five sixty Harrison Avenue in the South End. Five sixty Harrison Ave is a, is over, is an over sixty-eight thousand square foot parcel and it's located in the local, uh, excuse me, the economic development area of the South End. The proposal before you is to expand the existing health club into an approximately eight thousand square feet of unused office space. There is no external work to be done to the building, so it will remain as it looks today if this conditional use variance is approved. The current health club is located in the lower level or mezzanine section of the building and this extension will be located on the first floor above the current gym. There will be no new plumbing, just open space to accommodate the growing number of Saltares residents that are using the gym. The space will be for activities such as Pilates, personal training, as well as additional fitness room space. We filed up plans with ISD and received only one violation, which is because the health club is a conditional use in the EDA Central Zoning Subdistrict. Uh, despite the fact that this is an existing, ongoing, um, health club currently. So under the article, condition of use should find the following. The specific use is appropriate for the health club. It is an existing health club. It does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Um, five sixty Harrison Ave is a built environment with office, um, commercial, a gym and restaurant space and it's contained, uh, separate from the entire street. It is, uh, also, um, there will be no hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. It is, there is a, a gate that is manned with security, uh, when people enter and leave to go to this gym. Uh, we went through a full community process and have submitted sixteen letters of support from our Butters and I'm happy at this time to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And regarding five sixty Harrison Ave, our office defers to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a lightly-attended a Butters meeting held on four twenty-three twenty-five, where constituents provided some feedback regarding the impact to the neighborhood, but the applicant was communicative with the Butter and she wished him luck in his proposal. Uh, as the attorney did state, the proposal has received fifteen letters of support regarding the project. And they were also reviewed by the East Berkeley Neighborhood Association at their meeting, where they expressed support, noting that the developer has been collaborative with the community, responding to feedback and additional questions as requested. And they did also provide a formal letter of support regarding the proposal. At this time, uh, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, there's no other hands raised, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wu Will.
Well, yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your day.
Next we have case VOA one six nine eight four three one with the address of sixty-one Worcester Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Do you see any raised hands, uh, for Mr. Apple Smith?
I, oh, I see Jean, hold on. Jean, I'm gonna promote you. Are you, are you here to present? Hi, Jean.
Good morning, you there?
Yes.
Hi, sorry about that.
Are you presenting for sixty-one Worcester Street?
Um, yes, we are. We have more than one of us here.
Hi. Jude as well, here.
So please state your name, names and address for the record.
Sure, Jean Mixer, M.I.X.E.R., um, one eighty-six Liberty Street in Hanson, Mass.
Jude Waters, three oh four York Street, Canton.
Great, please proceed.
So we had a roof. So we had a roof.
So we, we applied for a roof, a roof permit, a roof deck permit to replace in kind, because there was already a deck down. So we done the roof.
It was approved.
And we started, and we started the, we started the deck, and we asked for a rough inspection. And when the inspector come up, now, we were already approved for the permit already by this time. So when he came up to do the rough inspection, he done some digging around, and he said, "Oh, there was never a permit for this deck." And I was like, "Okay, but the city, the city gave us the permit." And he goes, "I know." He says, "But we're gonna have to stop yous and get yous to go to the zoning board." So this deck, the roof is done, and the deck is up there framed and half-constructed. Just to let you know, that's where we lie at the moment, so this is why I wanted to speak, just to let you know. So they bought this apartment in 2003. They've been paying taxes on it. The deed, the deed says it has the deck and what else, and the plot plan showed a deck on it. So I'm not too sure why this happened, but the city did give us the permit, and that's why we built the deck.
So Inspector services had us change our short form to a long form, and then they had to deny the long form to put it in front of the zoning board, and there is a proviso on, on one of the attachments that was sent in, and it just has, from the Board of Appeals back in 2001, a proviso that says, "Decks approved for first, second, and third floors only," and that needs to be removed off of there, and they will let us proceed with the work and finish the deck that is 95% built.
Understood. Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Chair and nun, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 61 Worcester Street, our office differs to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a subcommittee flyer distribution on 4/225, which solicited one email from a constituent, but they provided no feedback during the community comment period. The address did not fall within any specific civic catchment area. All those surrounding civic associations were notified, but this also did not solicit any feedback. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
We tell them.
There's no other hands raised.
We tell them.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1696196 with the address of 150 to 152 State Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the august board that I am sitting before. My name is Tito Jackson. I am a 50-year resident of 37th Scholar Street in Dorchester, Mass, 02121. I am before you on Article 9, Section 2, non-conforming use. Change conditional Article 45, Section 14. The objective here is to change occupancy of the bar and lounge, which is Apex Rooftop Bar and Lounge, with, to live, to add live entertainment or number 38. This request is to amend the existing non-conforming use on the sixth and seventh floors of the bar and lounge at 150 State Street to bar and lounge with live entertainment. There is no request to change the existing use on the floors or to include the other floors in the request to add live entertainment. We've operated a bar and lounge on the sixth and seventh floor since Juneteenth, June 19th last year, and have provided different forms of live entertainment using the so-called one-time live entertainment licenses issued by MoCal. Our live entertainment operates generally from Tuesday through Sunday, and the closing time varies from 12:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and includes DJs, amplified and not amplified vocal and instrumental performers, dancing with patrons, stage shows, karaoke, trivia, and other forms of live entertainment. Our location is appropriate for live entertainment as it is located in a fully commercial building with adequate and appropriate facilities for operations in a zoning district, which is home to other businesses using, and, yeah, other businesses, including eating and dining establishments, are also offering live entertainment. The live entertainment will not negatively impact the neighborhood, create hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, or create a nuisance in general. The live entertainment is in keeping with the existing character of the neighborhood, including numerous other establishments with live entertainment, at least 19 that I know of. Further, we have a full security and operations plan in place to ensure that there is no negative impact. When the current proposal was initially presented to the community, we spoke with the Wharf District Council and received their support for live entertainment, and when we initially let folks know that we were doing this, this was always part of the proposal. We are here today to move forward with adding the live entertainment use based on our positive experience, providing live entertainment through special one-days, feedback from patron, and the fact that there have not been negative impacts to the community who will contend, who we will continue to work with closely. Should the ZBA grant the conditional use permit, we will then be permitted to apply for specific types of live entertainment with the Mayor's Office of Consumer Affairs and licensing, which will hold its own public hearing and issue its own decision, given that we do not request specific types of live entertainment for the purpose of zoning, but instead all potential forms of live entertainment to be further defined by MoCal. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present before you today.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 150 State Street, our office differs to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a distribution of subcommittee flyers on 3/24/25. During the community comment period, no emails or letters were received regarding the proposal. The Wharf District Neighborhood Council reviewed the proposal and also submitted a letter of support. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to differ to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parra from Councilor, Colina Zapata's office. At this time, the council would like to go in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no other hands raised.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1715120 with the address of 17 Linden Street. If the applicant and/or their representative, Attorney Marancy, are present, would they please explain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent City Realty in this matter, an application to replace an existing three-family dwelling at 17 Linden Street in Alston with a new four-story building to contain 14 apartment units, including four studio units, three two-bedroom units, and seven, three-bedroom units, I'm sorry, three two-bedroom units and seven three-bedroom units. There will be no off-street parking spaces and secure storage for 33 bicycles. Daniel Martinez of Calso Design, the project architect, is here today also, and will take the board to a brief presentation when I conclude my remarks. This matter was denied in August of last year. The board may recall predominantly owing to objections highlighted by the Planning Board's recommendation to the Board of Appeal regarding the building setbacks, in particular its rear setback. As a result, my client has made several significant changes to the project in response to the planning concerns, which I will now outline. The height of the building has been reduced from five stories and 52 feet to four stories and 44 feet. The building's height was not a matter of concern at the August hearing, nor was it objected to in the original planning recommendation, but the originally proposed six parking spaces required an additional story for the building to allow for vehicular access, and at the same time, those spaces reduce the amount of rear yard usable open space. The current proposal in eliminating the parking results in reduced building height and allows for more and better open space. As a result of the reduction in building height, the floor area ratio has also been reduced from 3.32 to 2.48. The front yard setback here has been increased from two feet to 7.4 feet, and the side setbacks have also been increased. While, as I noted, the six originally proposed motor vehicle parking spaces have been removed in favor of additional open space and lower building height, the amount of secure bike storage has been increased from 20 in the original proposal to those 33 bike storage spaces that I previously mentioned. And finally, also in direct response to the planning recommendation, the rear yard setback, which was the topic of most of the conversation at the first hearing, has been increased significantly from 7.7 feet to its current 20-foot setback. The site itself is approximately 6,490 square feet. It's zoned 3F4,000. In terms of the as-built neighborhood context, however, the surrounding area here is characterized by various housing types, including multifamily apartment buildings, and as the planning department recommendation notes, several approved large projects, Article 80 projects totaling over 900 units. All of this leading the planning department to conclude that proposed multifamily use in this location is appropriate, since this area is really poised for planning and zoning reform in order to, in order to allow denser future development.
Marancy?
Yes?
We did not hear you for like 10 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. That probably was not that important. I was simply saying that the size of the site is 6,490 square feet. It's zoned 3F4,000. And summary of what I said was that we agree with the planning department that proposed multifamily use in this area is appropriate. This area is poised for planning and zoning reform, as the planning recommendation notes, in order to allow for future denser development. With respect to the zoning relief requested, variances necessary owing to the number of dwelling units proposed for the lot, again, the planning recommendation notes that the present lot size requirement is outdated. There's a zoning violation owing to insufficient off-street parking, of course. The site has exited various public transit nodes, and it will appeal to renters who do not own motor vehicles. Relief is required for the setbacks and usable open space, which have all been adjusted per the previous planning recommendation. And with respect to the current planning recommendation and its conclusion specifically, my client would of course work cooperatively with the planning department to increase site permeability and add more landscaping, should the board see fit to approve this with the proviso of design review. And finally, my client commits three IDP units, representing just over 21% affordability, to consist of one two-bedroom unit and two three-bedroom units, subject, of course, to review and approval by the Mayor's Office of Housing. With that, I'll pause, turn it over to Danielle Martinez, who will just make a very brief architectural presentation, and then we'll take any questions or comments from the board. Danielle?
Good morning. Thank you, George. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me today. My name is Danny Martinez with KDI, Calso Design, Inc. We're the architects on the project. I'll briefly start at the site plan, if that's okay, just so I can give you a brief full review of projects. Next page, please. Yes. So right here, we have our main site plan. As you can see, the existing site is located on the left. It is, you know, it has a lot of parking spaces. It's not in the greatest shape. What we're proposing on the right, we have our main entrance. It's located at the bottom right corner, which connects you to the bike room. It also connects you to the mailroom, which can be accessed from the vestibule. On the left side of the property, we have the main circulation that leads to the trash enclosure in the rear. The bike room can also be accessed from there. Something that we did with the design was we raised the first floor, so that way the units on the first floor will get a little bit more privacy from the public realm. We also placed buffers of shrubs, hedge, hedging shrubs around the property, so again, increased the private, the privacy that the occupants will get in their units from the street. In order to engage the street, we also incorporated a bench, so that way people can, you know, take a rest there, you know, wait for a buzz or something. If we're going to the next plan, please, the floor plans? Yes. After that. So the basement offers additional parking space. The, we have 33 bike spaces total, 14 spaces on the first floor for standard long bikes. We have 10 on a bike rack. Then, in the basement, we have 19 spaces for nine bikes and 10 on a bike rack, which makes a total of 33. We have a variety of unit types with three studios, one one-bed, two four-beds, I mean, sorry, four two-beds, and six three-beds. Most of the units are fitted with a deck. Nine out of 14 units have a deck. The mechanical equipment has been completely located on the roof. We can talk about the elevations if we may. Okay, and for the architectural intent, we wanted to create something that is respectful of the existing context in the neighborhood. We noticed that there is some row houses, brick row houses next door, which have barrel-looking base, and we wanted to incorporate them into our design. What we did was we split the mansion into two primary volumes, which have the bay on the right, and then the left are the other more orthogonal volumes. We incorporated the curb element into our bay, again, right next to the row houses. We also incorporated this element into the entrance to create a cohesive design. To tie both of the primary volumes together with the context, we added some brick facade, and we added some headers, similar to what's in the neighborhood. On the left of that, we have the orange clapboard, and we're also showing some highlights of MICA, so that way it brings a little bit more contrast into the design. And lastly, yeah, sorry, that's what I had. You know, we used brick on the base as well to anchor the project, and again, give it more of what's in the existing context of the neighborhood. But that's kind of the main points I wanted to make. George kind of went over the zoning.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, for the three restricted units that you are proposing, what will be the AMI income?
So thank you, Mr. Valencia, for the question, and I did want to correct for the record, because I misstated the unit composition for the building in terms of the bedroom count and for the IDP, so I did want to clarify that for the record. Of the, of the IDP units, there will be a two-bedroom, a studio, and a three-bedroom. In terms of the AMIs, that has not been determined, since MOU doesn't review these non-Artikel 80 matters until after ZBA approval, but obviously, the requirement is 70%, and my assumption is that these would be three units at 70% AMI.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? And we have public testimony.
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted a butters' meeting on February 26, at which no concerns were raised. Petitioner is presented to the Alston Civic Association. They are in support of the application with a request that the petitioner commit to not write to undergraduate students, and a letter to that effect from the Alston Civic Association has been forwarded to the board. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with review from the planning department and a proviso for the proponent to execute a housing agreement with the Mayor's Office of Housing for three IDP units.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a good one.
Next, we go to case BOA 1679889 with the address of 106 Lincoln Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Suzola, McDermott, [unintelligible], Miller &amp; Hamley. I think it's still good morning, almost good afternoon, here on behalf of the development team. Madam Ambassador, if you could go to the next slide, our team, up one, sorry, Madam Ambassador, yep. Boostress Properties is the property owner and developer. The Boostress family has long owned 106 Lincoln Street, which is the, one of the sites in question in Brighton, where they have run their successful fire protection business at the site for over five years. The family has deep roots in the neighborhood. They grew up in Oak Square. They've been in family business in Brighton for 35 years or so, so they've done development in the neighborhood, and they've lived in the neighborhood, which is always helpful when you're developing in one of the neighborhoods in Boston. Also, our architects, David O'Sullivan and Donnie Garrity, are on from O'Sullivan Architects. Next slide, please. So, this is the site you could see here in red on the screen with the red dot and outline. It's actually two parcels. It's 106 Lincoln Street, which is on the left side, the kind of vertical parcel, and then the horizontal parcel on the right is to Litchfield Street, which is an adjacent property at the corner of Lincoln and Litchfield, that actually has an existing three-family rental building on it, which will be demolished and included as part of, the site included as part of this project. So, the overall site is just under 7,500 square feet. And then, if you scroll down to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, a little bit of a zoomed-in view, we're actually directly adjacent to the left side, there is a 100 Lincoln Street, which is a new building that was approved a few years ago by the board. That's a 32 condo unit, 27 garage parking spaces. It's a five-story building, and the idea here is for this proposal to be, you know, a complement to that. It's a much smaller development. This was not any, this did not cross the threshold of Article 80, small project review, but it's a much smaller lot. The idea was to be complementary to 100 Lincoln, which you'll see in some of our photographs and renderings. And then, finally, I'll note, obviously, right below Lincoln Street, on the other side of Lincoln is the Mass Pike and the commuter rail, where about a half-mile walk, little less than a half-mile walk to Boston Landing, to stop and shop the grocery store and all the amenities on the other side of the Pike. But we don't actually have any direct a-butters, or I'm sorry, a-butters across the street on Lincoln, just the Mass Pike. Next slide, please. This is just to show quickly some existing conditions and street views. You could see, really, the best one is the bottom right. You can see the Boostress Fire Building there in the foreground, and then in the background, you can see the beginning construction of that five-story building at 100 Lincoln. Next slide. Again, just some more context. Again, in this one, I'll just call out to the left side, that's the new 100 Lincoln Building, which we're going to match the height of and try and be complementary to. That's a condo building. We're proposing a rental building. And then, top left, you could see just that Litchfield Street Building. Again, just a three-story, three-family building that would be removed as part of this project. Next slide, please. A little bit more time on this slide, and then I can go back to it. Again, what's being proposed is a five-story, mixed-use, multifamily residential building. The ground floor will be parking, as well as a commercial or retail space on the corner of about 900 square feet. Second level is going to be office space, actually, because the Boostress family wants to remain on the site and continue to operate their fire protection building, business out of the building. And then, the top three levels will be nine residential rental units. There will be onsite parking for 13 vehicles with stackers, an interior bike parking room and some pedestrian improvements. And then, I just want to highlight, Madam Ambassador, before you move on to zoning, I can go into some more detail, but in a nutshell, we do need relief for some of the zoning code dimensional requirements, but all the multifamily residential use, the commercial use, the office use, those are all allowed. We are in a neighborhood keeping one sub-district. And although we do need zoning relief for building height, floor area ratio, and some of the setbacks, those are all really consistent with the conditions for the new building at 100 Lincoln. We do, you know, we are a corner lot, so a lot of that is mitigated by the fact that we don't have any a-butters across the street. And actually, during the process, we heard from some neighbors that they appreciated the building, because it would actually act as a buffer between Lincoln Street and its frontage on the Mass Pike and the neighborhood to the rear. So, we are in a corner lot, and that does, you know, is a unique condition along with fronting on the Mass Pike. And then, again, we do need parking relief for insufficient parking. We are at, I think, about 27 spaces required. We are at half that at 13, but again, we are less than a half-mile to Boston Landing and all those walkable amenities, and we actually are proposing a few stackers to allow for additional parking, so we need relief for that. We are complying with open space, the lot size, the front setback, et cetera. And the last thing I'll note before we go through the plans, and just to show you what I've been mentioning, is we do need relief for side yard and rear yard setback, but we are substantially complying with those. 15 feet is proposed, 20 feet required for the rear yard, and 9 feet required, 3 and 1/2 proposed for the side yard, but specifically with the rear yard setback going into the neighborhood, we step back and actually are compliant on the upper floors, and you'll see that on the plans, that the third, fourth, and fifth floors are actually compliant with the setback. It's just at the first floor because of the parking, and then the second floor for the office, where we are at 15 feet. Everything else, 3, 4, and 5 is all compliant. So, I'll toss it over to David or Donnie, if you can go to the next slide. Madam Ambassador will quickly go through the plans and then answer any questions that you might have. David or Donnie, you want to go ahead?
David O'Sullivan, O'Sullivan Architects here. I think Nick mentioned most of it. You can see our building footprint. We are at some points along the side, 3 and 1/2, but much of our building is 5 feet, and in the rear, we have 15-foot open space. The building at 100 actually has their parking garage right up to the property line and compliant as it goes up. Next slide. Mentioned ground floor, we've located the retail space on the first floor on the corner, where it's most obvious. We have three existing curb cuts, about 30-foot one on Lincoln right now, and a 12-foot one on Litchfield. We've reduced that to one 12-foot cut on Lincoln Street, where our main entrance is. Then, so we have a retail on the right side, garage entrance near the middle, and our residential and office lobby to the left, full bike parking that was mentioned, and you can see the rear green space in the back. Next slide. Basically, first floor, we'll up there with the parking and bike trash, interior trash, electric, utility rooms. The second floor is all Boostress office space, basically occupies all the floor, moving up. Next slide. You can see we stepped on the back, we stepped back residential units above on the third floor, fourth floor again in the back, steps further back. Next slide. And then, fifth floor, steps back from Lincoln, from the corner of Litchfield and Lincoln Street. And then, the top floor allows space for all the mechanicals and some solar arrays on the roof. Next slide. Our elevations, why don't we go to probably the renderings, go, you can see. This is our building, you can see in the background in the shadow of the gray, the same basic height, we're matching the same height and similar character to the 100 Lincoln Street, but this is where we wrap the corner with the retail space in the corner. Lot of the units have outdoor space, you can see the balconies up there. Next slide. This is along Lincoln, commercial space on the right, building entry over on the far left, and you can see how our height and the height next door match pretty much what happens and is already built. Next. Just a view of our entrance again, you can see our entrance, residential entrance, and that parking entrance tucked in off the street a little bit, with some landscaping in front. We are adding street trees along Lincoln as part of our project and our proposed development. Next slide. Just a kind of a bird's-eye view, showing the street trees, showing the landscaping around on Lincoln Street, Litchfield Street, I mean, and you can see kind of the roof deck areas where the building steps back at the top. I think that's it.
Yeah, thanks, David. Just to wrap up, Madam Chair, I'm sure that the Mayor's Office will go through. We did have a good community process as required. I want to note that there is a planning department recommendation of approval with proviso for design review, and then I know, I believe, Moir was on. In coordinating on some signage, just to make sure we're not avoiding, you know, causing any more issues on Lincoln, which is, you know, a decent cut-through for folks. And, you know, we want to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. So, happy to pause here and answer any questions from the board. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Suzola, just to be clear, I don't know if I understand correctly. You mentioned the VP, the planning department, recommendation is for denial without prejudice.
So, Mr. Valencia, if Mr. Hampton is on, he should speak, because I believe they submitted a draft recommendation in error, and they resubmitted a new one.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to address that, Madam Chair?
Feel free.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. That is indeed true. We had submitted a draft of a recommendation that should never have made it over to you. I had emailed Madam Chair and Stephanie Hayes the updated one, which I was hoping was going to be distributed to the.
It was, it was.
So, we are on the record now of approval with design review. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep. Any other questions from the board? May we have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, C. Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an a-butter's meeting on February 6th, at which no concerns were raised. Brighton-Alston Improvement Association is in support of this application. The Alston Civic Association is in support of this application with a request that the petitioner refrain from renting units to undergraduate students. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
There's no other hands raised, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Margaret Gray, I'm over at the Council of the Springs office. The council will defer to the board for this project, but she did want to put one concern on the record, as Nick mentioned, her concern is about the entry and exit from the garage for this project, which is located on Lincoln Street. Lincoln Street is a long road that connects Alston and Brighton, and it has become a significant cut-through street. It runs right next to the Pike. There have been a number of accidents. We, as we spoke, we have spoken to the proponent, and they were amenable to this, but we'd like to request that they work with BGD to pick whatever agency is responsible to install signage next to the driveway that will ensure that the driveway is daylighted and that residents can safely enter and exit the project. Thank you.
You? Any other raised hands?
Nope, there's no other raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with planning department, design review.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, can we take a 15-minute break?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Roll call, Mr. Stembridge.
President, Madam Chair.
I see you, Mr. Valencia.
Thanks.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Ms. Turner.
Present.
And Mr. Langham.
Present.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we're going to leave the 11:30 rediscussions and jump forward to the interpretation case scheduled for 12:00, 12 o'clock. We'll return to the other case after this. So with that, for the interpretation case, which is case BOA 170 4440, with the address of 944 Saratoga Street. If the applicant or their representative present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Stembridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Richard Lenz, an attorney with a business address of 245 Summer Street in East Boston. We're here before the board with requests for interpretation on this particular project. Madam Chair, I know when we were here last, we had a very robust discussion regarding the request for interpretation. I know these matters can be a bit technical. And I appreciated the opportunity for the board to listen to our presentation. I understand that legal has not necessarily made a decision on this yet. But I have had an opportunity just during the break to speak with Commissioner Joseph in depth, as well as Commissioner Williams, about our position on this. I believe there's been some, at least, enlightenment, if you will, with ISD on our position. I'm happy to give a very brief synopsis to the board, because I know we do have different members here today as to what the issue is. And then perhaps we could hear from Mr. Joseph as to ISD's position, or how they may view this as well. And hopefully, from Mr. Hampton regarding Planning's position. So I will do that as quickly and efficiently as possible. And thank you again for giving me that time. So this involves a project at 944 Saratoga Street in East Boston. It's in the Orange Heights neighborhood district. It's a vacant lot, and was submitted through the Article 80 process and approved through Article 80. One of the things I will point out to the board, and it's important for context, is that in light of the recent amendments to Article 53, which governs East Boston, all projects that have gone through the process, including especially Article 80 projects, generally did not move forward unless they could demonstrate compliance with zoning. And for good reason. I think there's been a lot of time spent on the amendments to Article 53, and that projects of this size, including Article 80 sized projects, were not endorsed by staff unless we could demonstrate and achieve compliance. This project has received the approval and recommendation of the VPDA, and we believe that they did that correctly in light of our position that this project was zoning compliant. During the permitting process, however, which is a separate parallel process, we can just jump back to Slide 1 for a moment. We did submit our petition, our application for permit. And as part of that permit application, we had a review done by ISD. We were cited based upon the project for several items, and I think it's important to just quickly, for the record, highlight what those are. First is flood hazard district, which is significant but not a zoning violation, just more of a notification that we need to comply with the requirements for flood district, including order conditions from the Conservation Commission. The second, and probably the most significant and important one, is seafrog applicability, which stands, I'm sure the board is aware, coastal flood resiliency overlay district. This is governed by Article 25A of the code. And I would point out, because I think it's important for this conversation, the importance of this interpretation, that seafrog is especially important in the East Boston neighborhood because many portions of that community are within the seafrog, where, you know, there are certain regulations that will apply to new development, as well as modifications of existing buildings. With this being a vacant lot and being located in a flood zone in the seafrog, there are certainly a number of regulations and requirements we have to comply with. And that affects the design of a building in the seafrog. Which leads to the next, I would skip over existing building alignment, which I don't think is important for this hearing, but I'll get to that at the end. But the two next items involve the building height and the building stories. And we believe that that is cited in error based upon the fact that we do have a seafrog overlay involved. And I'll explain why we believe that to be the case. When designing a building in the seafrog, we are limited based upon where the base flood elevation is located. And generally, in a flood zone, the base flood elevation is going to be higher than the grade of the property. The grade defined in the zoning code is the sidewalk. In this particular case, the base flood elevation being higher than the sidewalk dictates where the measurement of building height occurs if you read Article 25A Part 6. And essentially, what it says is, when measuring building height, you don't measure from the sidewalk in seafrog. You measure from what we determine as the design flood elevation. And I do have a chart to show this, but let me just explain it briefly. Design flood elevation is a measurement that is two feet above base flood elevation, which therefore increases where the beginning point is for measurement of height. So the best example I can give, and I've given this to Mr. Joseph and Mr. Williams, is that if a project, exact same project, were being built in a seafrog district versus a non-seafrog district, the characteristics of that building would be entirely different because of its location in seafrog. A four-story building in a seafrog district would have regulations that would very likely limit the usability of that first level. You'd not be able to have residential uses. You'd be required to wet proof it. There would be certain flood requirement regulations that would be involved versus the building that would be located in a non-seafrog district, which would not be subject to those regulations. So, and it logically follows, that the implementation of Article 25A and the use of Article 25A has good intent. And that is to address sea level rise and resiliency measures for areas that are flood prone. And in this case, that would apply to this property. In recognition of that, and certainly in recognition of not wanting to penalize a property owner from developing their land the same way somebody could develop outside the seafrog, the measurement adjustment actually allows for a physical height that is higher than what the zone would allow. So in this case, the maximum building height, for example, is 50 feet in this district. However, when you measure the 50 feet, where you measure from is what matters. And if we can scroll down, Madam Ambassador, I do have a chart that shows, or an elevation of the building. I do have a letter that I've included for the record. We can keep going down. I just want to jump to the actual elevation, and we can zoom in on it. That actually shows us a little bit better. Let's go to the, that slide right here is perfect. If we could zoom in on that lowest version, that's the front elevation. Zoom in a little bit tighter, please. So, this is good. So, board members, as we're looking at the design of our building, again, I'll reiterate, this was vetted and approved by planning staff. Planning staff, through Planning, East Boston, have prepared the amendment to Article 53, as well as Article 25A. And planning staff agrees that this is the correct application of how we apply the seafrog measurements. So in this case, we do see a ground level plus four levels above. As anyone might look at this, they'd say that it's a five-story building, not a four-story building. But it's important to understand, the definition of story is not necessarily a physical attribute of the building. It's a zoning definition. This is a five-level building, but under zoning, especially in the seafrog district, it is considered four stories. And the reason why is this follows. That blue line we see is the measurement for the base flood elevation. That's where the city says that is essentially considered and defined as the base flood elevation for this neighborhood. If we apply Article 25A 6, we begin our measurement at two feet above the base flood elevation. So that red line is what we refer to as the DFE, design flood elevation. Our building, as measured from the red line, is 49 feet 10 inches. And as a result, we would be compliant with Article 53 and the height limits that are set forth. And that would be a maximum of 50 feet. As the board can see, the measurement of the roof plan, well, the roof deck is a separate conversation, because that is permitted and not counted towards the building height. But the actual building height would be 55 feet 6 inches if measured from the sidewalk. But we don't measure from the sidewalk in seafrog. We measure from design flood elevation. So that's, that's item one. And we believe that that is compliant, as agreed to by planning, with the height limit for this district. The second issue is stories. The definition of a story, under the Boston zoning code, Article 2, and it's really important to define, because there is a separate definition for it, as to where the first story is located. In Boston, the first story is defined as that level, which is 65% or more above grade. Now, when we're talking about grade, grade is introduced as an exception in Article 25A. And again, how a story gets defined depends on where we are. In this case, because we're within the seafrog district, we are measuring grade at, again, the DFE, the red line. The level that is 65% or more above the red line is actually the second level. And again, this all ties back to, is a very logical approach to addressing sea level rise and resiliency measures because we wouldn't want to have any of that residential space at that lowest level. That doesn't mean the lowest level is vacant and barren. It's essentially used for commercial space or building amenity. It just can't have residential uses. And therefore, again, the seafrog definitions and the exceptions under seafrog allow for this, and they allow for it for good reason. If we go back to our example of the four-story building located outside of the seafrog, we would get the full benefit of that upper level, of those four upper levels for all that residential space, without being subject to any of the requirements. So our position is that the application of measurement of height is dependent upon whether or not you're in the seafrog. We don't disagree with ISD's interpretation of height and stories when it comes to properties outside the seafrog. But when we're in the seafrog, we have to do this different analysis. And I will say once again, that this definition and this application is supported by planning. So if we could jump back to, and I'll just address the other item that's open, is the item for building alignment. If we can jump back a few slides, Madam Ambassador, that will just, it's a much easier interpretation. I don't believe there's much debate on this either. So, if we scroll up to the viol, you know, that's perfect. Let's stop right here, exhibit A. So, when proposing a new building, one of the requirements is that, and it's a little bit confusing in East Boston these days, because most districts throughout the city have a minimum setback requirement for front gap. Many districts, under the amended version of Article 53, have a range. So they may say anywhere from three to five feet, for example. And then it's sort of confused by this building alignment calculation that ends up happening. In this case, we were cited for building alignment. I believe this item can be worked out specifically with ISD because we've provided this information to them. And I think this is, this is on point as to how the calculation is done. But I think for purposes of the board's request for interpretation, this outlines, based upon Article 18, how we calculate that building alignment. And essentially, just for, to make it quick here, you go and you look at all the developed lots on a particular side of the street. You add up their total frontage, which is what we've done here. And you find the most common, or the most typical setback that you see along that side of the street. And in this case, the lots that are developed on that side of the street have about 115 feet of frontage, and those are about four feet setback. So that becomes the mortal calculation for that street. That's exactly where we're at. And we believe that is a correct application of this. And that's something I think that, I don't think ISD is really disputing, but I want to make sure for the record that I've included that. So with that, I appreciate the board giving me the time to make this explanation, because I think it's important to understand, this is not something that I think the board sees regularly. And I think that, hopefully, Commissioner Joseph can confirm that that makes sense from ISD's perspective, or at least Mr. Hampton could indicate some information from planning on this. I'm happy to pause there, Madam Chair, and answer any questions of the board. I know there was a lot of information.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it would be great if Commissioner Joseph could weigh in. That's, that was what was missing the last time.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, good afternoon, board members, good afternoon, Attorney Lenz. And thank you very much for taking your time earlier to call, and we speak about this one here. So Commissioner Paul Williams and myself are here. And we're able to hear and understand that everything that you have said. And we agree with the planning department that allowed this to be considered as what you just explained to the board. Yes, that is my position at this point, but Abel's not here right now, the one who wrote the violations. But I'm as the representative of this department. So I feel like your interpretation of this matter is fine, and I plan to go along with the planning board decision here on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Joseph. I appreciate you addressing that.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Madam Board, you have 25A 6 that talks about this very issue. It said, higher the grade, or two feet above the BFE base flood elevations. I believe the plans reflected that. That's it's the higher than the grade. I believe that's where the height of the building should be calculated from.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Lenz, your project is not, if this is, as a right, is not required to provide IDP units. But the question is, are you, are you, the project is going to be 100% market rate? Or is the proponent considering any affordable units on site?
Through, through the chair, and Mr. Valencia, I appreciate the question. I want to be careful of the scope of the hearing that's before you. I feel, I want to answer that question, but I feel like that is outside the scope of an interpretation on the zoning violation. And I want to be careful about not, I guess, clouding the issues, if you will. That's, that's a separate issue that we can certainly address through planning. But that's, that's something I don't want to have to cloud this, this particular hearing.
Yeah, if we could focus on questions on the interpretation issues, that would be great. Are there any other question on this? And Attorney Lenz, remind us, were there other issues, or have those now been resolved? And this is the only one outstanding?
This is, the calculation of height and then the mobile building alignment, which I believe we're now, if I'm hearing correctly, we are in alignment with Commissioner Joseph's determination there. I guess the appropriate thing, Madam Chair, rather, rather than having to have this as a decision, we're prepared to defer this matter briefly, and then I can circle back with Commissioner Joseph. If the violations will be removed, then we can dismiss the request for interpretation. Then I have to have the board make any particular decision on this.
Does Commissioner Joseph agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, so Attorney Lenz, are you agreeable to a deferral in that case?
Yes, I think earliest possible date, just so I can circle back with Commissioner Joseph and the plans examiner to have those removed.
Okay, Caroline?
The earliest is June 24th for our next hearing.
Perfect.
Okay, with that, may I have the motion?
I make the motion to defer to June 24th?
May I have a second? Tekken, Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries to you then.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you hearing me on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, culture.
It's the, yeah.
And with that, we'll return to the remaining case from the rediscussions at 11:30 a.m., which will be for case BOA 169 0706, with the address of 507 Massachusetts Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Do you have Armando Hernandez on?
Yeah, he's on. Let me promote him. I've tried to promote him earlier, but he won't go over. There we go. Armando, can you unmute yourself?
Hello, everyone. How are you today?
Good. Please state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Hey, Madam Chair. All right, I know we got bounced. This is Attorney Joe Hanley with Armando and Development Team. Sorry about that. I thought we were going to be a little longer on those extensions. So just briefly, if you could pull up, Madam Ambassador, the presentation from the beginning. If you do have it there. And it doesn't look like this is it, unless you go back to the first page. Okay. Do you have the actual presentation that we had sent over to Stephanie? So it starts with the Chester 507 Mass Ave. If not, I'll just give you a second. So while you're doing that, Madam Chair, I'll just go over the overview here. So again, Joe Hanley, Attorney Joe Hanley for the record. Armando Hernandez is the co-owner of 507 Massachusetts Avenue, along with Thomas Callis. So 507 Mass Ave is a four to five-story brownstone that's in the Chester Square section of the South End. Armando and his partner, Thomas, both of whom are South End residents and experienced residential property managers, purchased the building in 2023. And we had some materials that we show you that was not in a great condition, including a small patio area that they were able to make some groundwork improvements to. At that point, it was relicensed for seven suites for a lodging house. It has been a lodging house for several decades. It was built in the 1800s as a single family, and then converted to a lodging house. And it has now been extensively renovated and rebranded as the Chester by Armando and Thomas. And again, licensed for seven suites. On the lower level, the garden level, there is a 1,500 square foot floor plate that was occupied and permitted for decades as a single unit. And when the gentleman purchased the property in 2023, it was an eight-suite lodging house, but there was some work that needed to be done. And so we proceeded with licensing with the idea that we would come back to address the garden level. Here we are. So the proposal is to convert the former single unit, which you'll see above, I believe, is the existing condition. It was a one-bedroom with like two or three sleeping alcoves, if you will. And the proposal is to convert that to three suites. One of the suites, oh, there you go. So I kind of went through this already, but if you go to the next slide, I'll quickly hit this. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Next slide. Yep, so you can see the conditions of the building as I described. The after, beautiful building on the inside, you can see, yep, keep going, Madam Ambassador, please. Great reviews for its operation as a boutique inn and as licensed. Next slide. I talked about the ownership, Armando and Thomas, both South End residents. This, this is also a professionally managed lodging house by South End Hospitality Management, which is also local and extensive experience in the immediate community. Next slide, please. So we operate with a good neighbor policy with the Chester Square Neighbors, which is the local neighborhood association. They submitted a letter of support for this proposal, and they have helped guide Thomas and Armando since 2023 with a series of oversight regulations that we adopted for its proper operation. Next slide, please. Obviously, the continued use of this and improvement of a hospitality use as it has been zoned and utilized for decades. Next slide, please. So I talked about the project, again, going from mending the lodging permit from seven to 10 suites. Again, the building originally operated as eight, and the garden level was a residential use as, as one unit. So 1,500 square feet will be divided into three stu, three suites. One is a one-bedroom suite, the others are studios. Next slide, please. And you can see, here is the zoning that we were cited for. In particular, these relate merely to the existing non-conformities of the building. Primarily, it's an extension of a non-conforming use. Again, licensed and operated as a lodging house for decades, dramatically improved by the current ownership. Usable open space insufficient. There is no change to that. We have existing patio space in the back, and we're merely converting what was once residential to the lodging house use on the garden. Same thing with the additional lot area, which isn't being changed. And the floor area ratio, this is something we explored with ISD. Again, the garden level was habitable and residential, but what happened from 2023 to current is the gentleman were using it for storage and discontinued its residential use. We would suggest it was never abandoned. We intended to move forward. But having said that, we're seeking relief for the FAR. We think that its long existing condition justifies the grant of that relief. Next slide, please. So I went through this before. You can see, this is, if you went to the site today, there's bedroom in the front. This acts as one residential unit. And then as you go back, there are those bedroom, I would call them sleeping alcoves, if you will. And those are the existing conditions. Again, today, it's utilized for storage. And with the improvements to accessibility and access, we were able to convert it to three new high-quality suites. Next slide shows you those suites? If you will. And you can see the at-grade patio, Madam Chair. That is part of our property that remains and is part of the 2023 improvements. There was stormwater retention and groundwater recharge work that was done there. Next slide. And here are the three suites. In purple is that one-bedroom suite. And in green is the studio suite. And yellow is the front studio suite. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we did, we were at the board in April 29th, and this matter was deferred because we sought to address the recommendation at the time from the planning board, which pertained to the location within the coastal flood resiliency, resiliency overlay district. And we had the opportunity to meet with Amber and the team with the VPD. And they discovered along with us that this is existing residential occupancy. So it would not be appropriate to have design and implementation measures. Instead, what we worked on and provided to the VPD for their updated review is an emergency flood and storm management plan, which allows us to conduct, or requires us to conduct risk assessment, pre-storm prep, and, and do evacuation and storm warning and flood response actions in accordance with the use for that ground level. Essentially, what Essentially, what it would mean is in the event of a determined flood, the occupants, which are again, short-term, this is an inn, right, would be either relocated or those rental of those units, the night rate would be, you know, discontinued until remediation was occurred. And there's other things in that agreement. We thank the BPD for taking us through that process. Next slide. So gee, there's just some of the commitments that we've worked out with the neighborhood. And again, you'll see that by virtue of the support. And the next slide, please. So I, I think I'll end there. But we are, we are pleased that we could return after the deferral to address the BPD recommendation, work through the emergency flood and storm management plan. We've had very good community outreach in support of this. The residential condominium owners at 511 Mass Ave submitted a letter, other abutters from the immediate area, as well as the Chester Square Neighbors Association in support of this application. This will allow a long-existing lodging house use to, for an extension of that use, which is reasonable, appropriate, and will upgrade the amenities as well as the contributions of, of this use at this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Hampton available just to address that seafrog piece?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City Boston Planning Department. As you can see, we made a recommendation of denial without prejudice, and that was based on planners and the plans that were submitted to us for review. Now, I understand, you know, there was some discussion in terms of resiliency with some of the staff here at the planning department. However, when you look at the plans that we reviewed, all these three suites were marked as storage space. And that's why, you know, we made the recommendation of denial without prejudice because we don't support that of creating new livable space in the seafrog. Understanding also that this may have been an existing condition for decades. However, that should have been noted on the plans. If they didn't think that this was being abandoned or it would be an issue, that should have been marked on the plans to begin with instead of storage. So that's the reason why we have a denial without prejudice recommendation is because from our review, this was non-livable space being transferred into livable space. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was going to jump on. I think the same thing Mr. Hampton said is the plans that we had to review and signed and stamped by an architect indicate the existing conditions are storage. So I had the same concerns as Mr. Hampton. So I think my question is, do you have stamped plans from an architect showing it as a bedroom? I'm not inclined to support this because our recommendation is still denial without prejudice. So I'm sort of trying to figure out the best path forward, if it's just a resubmit old plans or...
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's actually more specific than that. The second plans that we submitted actually did show the original use as living space. And, you know, the licensing board, this, this is a regulated use as well. The licensing board has regulated and licensed this for consistently up until 2023 for eight lodging house units. There are seven on the upper levels. The eighth is the, the garden level. And so we appreciate, you know, I think Mr. Hampton did a good job describing it. But the, the further action was this was actually reviewed with the sustainability planner for the BPD, who directed us to prepare this emergency flood and storm management plan, of which we can provide a copy in order for her to update. We were suggested that we not do flood mitigation design work as a result because of the residential occupancy.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any real public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Rockscory Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting facilitated on March 3rd that was very well received at the meeting with the abudders voicing support for the proposal. Next, the proposal was presented to Chester Square Neighborhood Association, who voted in support of the proposal. To date, our office has received one letter from Chester Square Neighborhood Association, again, in support of that proposal. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like you to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other hand raised, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Wait, there's one. Here is one hand raised. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, Kai?
Hello.
Hi, state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, so my name is Kai Vernstrom. I'm at 511 Mass Ave. So I'm a direct abutter of this property. I, so I wasn't able to join the entirety of the meeting, but I just wanted to make sure I had the time to express my support, again, as a direct abutter for, both for the project and for the proposed expansion into the, into the basement area. I have, you know, I've been over to the building. I've had family stay at the, stay at the building. It's been a, it's been a great resource for both myself and other, others in our building. Having, having a place where we can have those friends and family when they come to see us has been great. And, you know, from my understanding, the addition of these three additional units down in the basement would, you know, from a, I think from an economic standpoint, make this project significantly more viable. And, you know, anything, anything to that effect, I fully support. You know, our mom and his team have been great neighbors. They've done a great job helping with cleanup of our alley and cleanup of our, our streetscape out on Mass Ave. So I just wanted to, for the record, state that I am very much in favor of, of supporting the additional units that they're requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more hand. Oliver?
Hi, my name is Oliver Holmberg. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm also a neighbor. I'm at 662 Tremont Street. And I'm also in support of the project, also for a lot of the reasons that, that I think Kai was mentioning. It's been increasingly extremely difficult to house friends and family when they're visiting town. So as much lodging as, as we can get into the neighborhood, hotels are very expensive. And just by a simple factor of supply and demand, I think, really appreciated by me and, and other people in the neighborhood. And from what I, from my, my mom's work, it feels well and good.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, would you like, is, may I add?
Briefly?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank the neighbors and the neighborhood group. You know, this is a location that has a lot of challenges on Mass Ave. And, you know, we're proud that we've been able, the client has been able to invest quite a bit. And it's very much a community-based action. I, you know, what, because we submit our presentation to you on a deadline, this emergency flood and storm management plan, which was worked out in great detail with the BPD, we couldn't submit because it was recently, you know, it was done after that point. I would like to submit it for the record and suggest that obviously, if we would have the pleasure to, or the opportunity to proceed with approval, that we would continue to work with the BPD on any of those issues. And I thank the board for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I can put forward my motion. I'm not sure if the, my colleagues agree with me, but I'm still sort of stuck on the plans that were submitted, what we reviewed, what we had in time for this hearing. So I'm going to make a motion of denial without prejudice for the reasons stated in our planning materials. And it's, you know, the location of living space below the design flood elevation.
Gary, can I say something? Armando here. No, no.
We are making a motion right now, so that's not the appropriate time. Let's continue the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. So I think the, the idea is please resubmit and come back to us. I, is that it, Mr. Stunbridge?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.